All right. Now call the city council meeting to order for November the 10th, 6:00 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation given by Jane Braylinger.
I pledge allegiance to the black, the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May you see them?
Madam clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McKeer?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Here. All right. So tonight we have a lot on our agenda and some of our meetings have gotten a little out of hand. So we will be timed. All the speakers will have three minutes to speak. You'll only be able to speak one time per agenda item. And please refrain from making comments from the audience. Please keep all comments at the podium. All right, do we have Lowell on yet? If not, we'll move on and come back to it. Okay, we'll go ahead and do item number five. This would be the employee longevity recognition. Ms. Kelly, is that gonna be you in her absence, sir?
We have one of our code enforcement officers that just completed his first year, Rick Warren.
What'd go, Rick? Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Are the attorneys ready yet?
Nick's on there.
Yeah, Jerry, I'll defer to you if you want to proceed. I don't see Lowell on.
Okay, we'll wait for Lowell. Appreciate that.
Consent agenda.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be for items six through 14. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items?
I wish to remove number 10 if I have questions.
Number 10. Anything else?
I'd like to remove number 11.
Number 11. All right, so we got six through nine and 12 through 14. Be looking for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Yes. All right, item number 10, this will be the event request for the Shop Small Saturday. Did you have a question?
Yes, is Ms. Benham available? The question is directed to Ms. Benham.
Uh, don't see Ms. Benham. Is she on Zoom by chance? Hey, maybe it's a question staff can answer.
Um, I doubt it, but here goes. I was looking at, um, the, um, and she's calling that the, give me a minute. Shop Small Saturday. And she gave, um, an area for the shopping. I understand Ms. Benham is, um, Avon Park, Main Street. I get that. But it's not every, and she, the direction, the area of shopping was from 27 to Dunison Park. And my only concern was, we have a lot of small businesses here in Avon Park. And it's not every day that they get that recognition for residents to come out and shop, small town businesses. So I was wondering, why did she just choose from 27 to Dunison Park? And if she just wanted to concentrate on Main Street because of, you know, she's the director of Main Street, then why is she, why is she doing it? Because there are other, there are other small businesses here in Avon Park that we would like them to be able to have people come and shop at their stores as well.
Exactly. Nancy Fisk, 603 South Hart Avenue, Avon Park. When Jane sent out the things for Main Street, it was because we, for Main Street, it's just that district. However, we did submit my name and the Chamber of Commerce as town, hometown champions or whatever the designation is, so that we will be receiving materials as well. And the Chamber of Commerce is going to be handling the shops out on 27 and in other areas. And so I guess it will be announced on Facebook. I haven't gotten my materials and Kamala has not gotten hers either, as far as I know. And so if there are businesses that would like to have those promotional materials, they can contact us and we will get them out to them. But when those materials arrive, we will be getting them to other businesses outside of the Main Street district.
Okay, so what was the reasoning for the 27 to Dunison Park then? What was, what was that about? I mean, if you're, I understand, Ms. Nancy, I understand that that's Main Street. You and Jane is part of Main Street. I get that part. But for you to, you know, bring this information before the council to specify a certain area, that's my concern. Even though Kamala, the chambers are doing one thing. You came to the city with this, that you want to block off streets. No?
No, no, the streets will not be blocked off.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of another one. That you wanted, you wanted this to the small businesses to have some emphasis on small time, on small town shopping. You brought that here to the city. You brought that here to the city, to the council for approval, right?
I think what she said-
I don't even think you brought it for approval. You just bringing it to let us know that that's gonna be happening, right?
Well, yes, because what we wanted to do to promote it was put signs, the small signs, all up and down the mall, so that anyone who comes through Avon Park would know that it was small time, Shop Small Saturday. And so it was a way to advertise and that's the only, you know, that's where we thought would be the best way to advertise for it.
I get what you're saying, Ms. Fisk. I just don't, I just happen not to agree with it. If you couldn't include all Avon Park's small business, because like I said, this is, this don't happen every day. Small businesses don't, don't get the whole town to turn out or put that attention on them that way. And so if you was just, if you, if your organization is just Main Street, then perhaps you shouldn't be doing this event at all. And you shouldn't let someone else do it so it can include all the small businesses.
It will include all the small businesses. We're advertising that this is Small Business Saturday and it's for everyone. But we are, we are, we asked for the, to be able to decorate the gazebo or have a booth in the gazebo and to put signs on Main Street. And I thought we needed permission to do that, to advertise for it.
The purpose of this, Bernice, of this application is not saying that that's the only places to shop. She's just asking permission to put signs in that particular area. You don't have to ask permission to, or at least you can't, don't have to ask permission from us to put signs anywhere else in the city of Avon Park. Like any of those other businesses that want to participate, which I think we've got a three, you know, three groups that are willing to go out and gather those businesses can, they can put signs in their yards, yards just by asking that property owner. But she can't place signs in the middle of Main Street unless she asks us, which was the purpose of this. She's not saying only Main Street is participating in this Shop Small Saturday. She's just asking if she can put signs there on the mall.
And why, and why couldn't she have, why couldn't they have put signs? There's some small businesses on 27.
She can, but those are owned by private people. So all she has to do is ask those private people, can I put a sign near you?
And so, and they're going to do that?
If they want to.
We have requested extra materials so that we can, there are, there are things to put in their window and shopping bags that they can give out and different ways that businesses can promote their business as part of this. And this is really an American Express program. And they offer it to Main Street every year to promote it. And so the advertising goes out to everyone, not just Main Street. And we will have more materials to give to the other businesses.
Okay. So we can just encourage all, all the businesses that want to participate to reach out either to the chamber or to the, to Nancy Fisk or to Avon Park Main Street and show their interest so that they can take them the materials when they come in.
Well, you came in and you explained it differently than, than what is presented in the agenda. What is presented in the agenda is the area of 27 to Dunison Park. That's it.
Cause that's the only place we have to request permission for.
Yeah, it says we would like to display yard signage on the mall from US 27 to Donaldson Park. It's not saying that the vent only is gonna be there. They just want to display signage from Donaldson Park to 27.
Okay, okay, you guys don't get it, okay.
I do have one more question, Ms. Fisk. So I, I see that in there they have decorating the gazebo. Do you know what kind of tools they're using? I don't mean tools, I mean fixtures that they're using. I mean, are they constantly nailing? Cause I know that a lot of events all of a sudden have been on the gazebo. And I'm just worried about damage to it because of nails, staple, not, yeah, staples, I guess. Do you know how they're fixing those decorations and signage on that?
As far as I know, I did it two years ago and there are hooks that are there already that remain. And so any lights or anything, as far as I know, nothing has been nailed in there for, even for the Christmas decorations, there are hooks that are there already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for item number 10? Seeing none, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve C10, Shop Small Saturday.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Before we move on, we'll bump item number 30 now. Uh, we have our outside attorneys on for the fam cabo discussion. Go ahead, Jerry, when you're ready.
Yeah, we have Nick Clavers as our outside attorney burning the airport. And we have our airport consultants, Lowell Clary on the line. And we basically need to give you an update with regard to what's happening with the airport. Status report with regard to, I guess, what we call fam cabo, the less E of the airport. Uh, Nick, you want to take that?
Sure. So a, as I think was discussed at a previous meeting, there have been some questions around fam cabo's performance under the lease agreement that was signed with the city in November of 24. And the city through Jerry sent a letter to fam cabo, I think it was at the end of September, asking for a number of pieces of information and just various items that it appeared fam cabo was, was not performing under the lease agreement. There have been some further conversations between representatives from fam cabo and the city about some of those issues. The city received some responses in writing. Ultimately, you know, after some discussions internally, the city manager, along with Jerry and myself and Lowell, kind of went through those and determined that it was appropriate to send a follow-up to that end of September letter. Because some of the items, we really didn't get satisfactory answers to. And also because there are certain things that came up in between that September letter and the, the time when the second letter was sent, which was, I believe, Friday. The, the most pressing item of the new things that has come up is that it appears fam cabo's parent company has changed hands, whether through some type of stock sale or, you know, transition of partnerships or something along those lines. And under the lease agreement, the city was supposed to receive notice of any type of transition like that so that the city could determine whether, you know, that was an assignment that required approval. Uh, so we've asked fam cabo for more information about that transition to figure out whether or not that is something that should have been brought to the city's attention before, before it occurred. So those are sort of the high points. I, I'm happy to go into more detail about anything. I, I don't know if all of you have seen the letter that Jerry sent on Friday, but happy to, to take questions on all that.
Okay, any questions?
I have some, yes.
Go ahead.
This is Nick that's on right now, right?
Yes.
Attorney, okay. Just bear with me a second. Okay, I'm gonna reserve the right to ask later. I don't, it's not right this minute. Later on in the conversation is where my questions will fit in. I don't have any directed toward the attorney at this moment.
Okay. Any questions at this point?
Um, I have one. One of my question is, did they have, did, um, this is for you, Mr. Jerry. Did they have authorization to, I guess, transfer the lease? Or did they have authorization to do that from the city?
Yeah, so of course Nick, Nick can answer that question as well, but the, that they need our authorization to, to, to make that transfer, as he, as he mentioned. And it, we did not even know about it until just recently.
And so when, when the attorney here on Zoom say that they're waiting on a response from them to find out, you know, what really happened? Does it matter what really happened if they didn't get the authorization from us?
Yeah, so I, I can answer that if, if you'd like, Jerry. So the lease specifies that any changes in control greater than 20% require pre-approval or pre-notice to the city. And the city then has the option to authorize that transfer of the lease or not. All, to, to the best of our understanding, we don't know what percentage of ownership was or was not transferred, you know, several weeks ago. And so the intent of the city's letter from this past Friday is to determine, was that 20% threshold met or was it not? Um, because if it wasn't, then, you know, there, there may not be an issue here. But if there was, then that is something that the city was supposed to have been notified of.
Any other questions?
So who's the acting interim CEO at this point? That's for anybody who wants to answer.
As best we understand it, it is Michael Powell.
And so when we entered into this agreement with fam, this goes way back before this council, who vetted Michael Powell and that whole group? That's for anybody who wants to answer.
I don't, I don't know who vetted them.
Did Lowell Clary vet them?
No.
So nobody vetted their, their past dealings?
I, I don't know what staff did, you know, at that time. It was a very different city manager and so on. And I would, you know, I didn't even know about this. Apparently they, they talked to the, the council members. And then it came up at, to me at a, a meeting, so.
Okay. And so Michael Powell and JT Clark's role, what is their role in any of these organizations right now? Oh, we know Michael Powell's the interim CEO, but what, what is JT Clark's role in this right now? Anything?
Uh, I think that's fairly unclear at this point.
Yeah, based on it, and, and that is in large part, the intent of our letter from Friday is to determine what, if any, role JT Clark still has in these organizations. The communication that I think Jerry received a couple of weeks ago suggested that JT is, has no role in any of these organizations anymore.
All right, so the rent, regarding the rent, the rent's past due. Is that for October's rent or is that for November's rent?
I believe that is November.
It is November.
We did receive November's rent payment today.
Okay, so we received that today.
So how many times since they took possession, have they been late with their rent?
Three times.
Three times. Was it over 15 days?
Yes.
Do we, do we give them late fees?
We do, $362.25. And we give them a 10-day grace period, not 15.
Oh, so it's been more than 10 days on those three occasions?
Correct.
Okay. So going to the amount of the $144,932, which is the fees and expenses owed to the city that fam is asking to be deferred, how long are we willing to defer these past due amounts? Seeing as their rent's been late multiple times?
That's, that's a policy decision for the council. It's my understanding that about $50,000 of that 144 is interest on the principal that they owe.
Okay, so has the security gate, the beacon, the poppy, the AWAS, all that, has it, has it been fixed yet?
No.
Still not. So they're operating an airport without safety measures put in place?
Correct.
So all this is clearly a blatant breach of the lease, correct? It, it is, it's, it's a breach of lease. So of any of the questions above, are we, how long? My, that's my question to either the council or the attorneys, but how long are we gonna let this go before we come up with a plan of action? I mean, are we gonna continue to?
The, the answer as to whether it's a bright, blatant breach of lease is really a legal question. And we're trying to get, obtain that with the additional correspondence that we're doing now.
Okay.
And we should have something fairly soon, cause I, I think most of that was demanded immediately.
So what are the consequences if we were to terminate this lease effectively? Would there be any?
What kind of consequence, you know, it may be that you draw a lawsuit. I don't know that, that you would or you wouldn't. I mean, I don't think it would be justified if we made that decision. But you would certainly lose the money that you invested in getting them onboard in the first place. Cause that would probably be unrecoverable at that point. Assuming they don't have a deep pockets in order to pay that money if they haven't paid it so far.
Mr. Jerry, are, are, I, I know you, you know, has been talking to the other attorneys and y'all trying to figure out a lot of things. Seems like there's a lot of stuff that needs to be figured out and nobody seems to have answers to at this point. And are you willing to give a recommendation to this council at this point of what directions we should be headed?
No, this was just to update you as to where, what status is, so you know that we're working on it.
So how long are you expecting to work on it?
Until we have answers that, that Nick, our, our airport attorney determines that, gives us an answer as to whether they're in breach or not.
So my concern is, are we gonna continue to let them go and go and go? Or are we gonna hold their feet to the fire and say, you know, this is the deadline?
Yeah, I think we're gonna hold their feet to the fire. We had that discussion, you know, just recently, by phone, the four of us.
And, and what was the decision to hold their-
Decision is to hold their feet to the fire and get answers immediately so that we can make a decision as to what to do, you know, and, and make, make sure that they understand what they have to do in order to be in compliance.
Okay.
So do you recommend that we choose a date to hold their feet to the fire?
Not at this moment, unless Nick has an idea.
No, I mean, I don't want to suggest a drop dead date, but I will say that the deadline that we set in this most recent letter was seven days from the date of the letter, which would be this Friday, for fam cabo to submit the information regarding that transfer of ownership or, or control. And I, I think of the items that we sort of highlighted in that most recent letter, that is the one that is, uh, most.
And if they don't meet that particular deadline, then what's the direction?
Make sure you tell them we want a discount for the minutes, that they're not part of the meeting there.
Nick, I see you there?
Yes, we're back.
All right. We had another question of who vetted the Rossi group? I'm assuming, do you have an answer or not?
Uh, I was not part of that conversation. So I, I can't speak to that personally.
Yeah, this is, this is Lowell, I did that.
What was that Lowell?
Yes. Rossi Group was 100% at the time we did the lease owned by JT Clark.
Okay, so they were vetted by yourself or your firm?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions for the attorneys?
Um, Mayor, I have a question that didn't get answered. And that was, when Friday the 14th come, what's the next, what's our directions from there? Because that's supposed to be the deadline date that they gave them the extra seven more days. Then what, where we go from here?
Well, I think you just have to trust that we're gonna move as quickly as we can. It may not be the final answer. We may have to get, you know, other correspondents as well, you know, but we're moving as quickly as we can, because we understand the importance of it.
You, you gave them 30 days and then you turned around and you gave them another seven. So you're saying you're giving them more?
Well, we'll see. We'll just have to wait and see, you know, what we have to evaluate when we get it. If you all make decision, you know, then if you want our advice on it, then you're gonna have to just wait until we get to that point.
And the council is willing to wait after what's going on?
Yeah, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, but basically the next step is that if the answer's not satisfactory, then you'll have to move forward with canceling the lease or getting out of the lease in some way. And so in order to do that, you would want to make sure that you had your legal bases covered. And that's basically what you're trying to accomplish is to make sure that you have your legal bases covered.
We have to make at least a formal notice of, you know, breach of the lease. Let's say a lot of time, whatever reasonable time is to comply, if they're capable of complying. And, um, we go from there.
I, I get that, Mr. Burr, but I guess the question I'm asking is, when Friday the 14th come, you have given them ample enough time to respond and they're not even responding to the time that you've given them. Do the attorney take the lead and, and do what they want? Or do you get with this board and say, board, what is it that you want?
Well-
That's the question.
When we have an answer as to the, the question of non-compliance of the lease or compliance, then we'll come to the board as to, or if it's partial compliance and they ask for more time, all those things are possibilities. And we'll bring that to the board, just like we did tonight. I mean, it's really, like I said, this is an update. We're gonna try and move as quickly as we possibly can to resolve this one way or the other. But I'm not, I- But I'm not, I can't give you a, a precise time period as to when things are gonna happen. We'll, we'll do what we need to do in order to pay for you to have a, a good case. You don't want to first throw away a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever it is. The city has invested in getting this, um, getting them onboard. But second of all, you don't want to add to that by in the, into a lawsuit, which you, you know, because we're, we have lack of information, or we have bad information or whatever, that we end up losing and then pay attorney's fees to both sides. We pay our own attorney's fees and their attorney's fees, and we lose. So we want to make sure that we are absolutely solid, and, um, that takes time.
So our next meeting isn't until January, then?
December eighth.
Oh, December eighth, okay.
Right. And if we feel like there's a basis for a special meeting, we'll ask you for it.
Okay.
Anything else? Going once?
Um. No, I guess, I know, no, I'm good.
Okay. All right, with that, Lowell, Nick, we appreciate your time.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, good evening.
You as well. All right, brings us back to item number eleven, to be planning and zoning board appointment. Okay, so we had a new applicant, uh, Mr. Jason Kopta. We had one cancellation, Mr. Garganus. Anything?
Um, I would, I would like to follow how we did, um, with Ms. Blake. Um, she had been assigned as an alternate, and so we left her as an alternate. And we assigned the additional person who applied as an actual member. Um, since these are all relatively new members anyway. I would like to make a motion to, um, make Mr. Jason Kopta the full-time member of the Planning and Zoning Board and keep Sarah Piper as the alternate position.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, questions?
Uh, I, I, I need to get an understanding of it, um. Ms. McGuire, you saying there was someone else that had the application in?
Uh, last time when we had a vacancy on the board, and we had, uh, Sabrina Blake was our alternate. But rather than bumping her up, because we said we had already assigned her as the alternate, we had a new member that applied, and so we gave that new member the position on the Planning and Zoning Board and left Ms. Blake as the alternate. So I just want to follow suit with that.
Have you spoken to Ms. Blake and see if she wanted to be bumped up to that?
I don't, she's no longer an alternate on there.
Okay.
That's just, that was a while back, but it was, it was the same situation, I think actually on the same board, so.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address, you have three minutes.
Sarah Piper, one hundred East Main Street. So I'm the alternate, so the way it normally works is the alternate, when someone steps up, steps down, goes in, since I've already been vetted and approved, and then you choose a new alternate. Why are we changing from that?
Because that's not what we did last time.
Well, there's a lot of things we don't do.
And last time, we didn't actually get to vet either one of the new members anyway, it was just kind of a, but anyway, I feel like it was fair, it's fair to Sabrina Blake, we didn't bump her up. I feel like that's what we kind of set a precedent for doing, so.
Oh, no, 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 Ms. McGuire, we've never set a precedent of how we appoint people here. Let's make, let's, let's make sure we have that clear.
Okay.
We've never set a precedent of how we do things and how we appoint people.
I think this is a pattern of showing anytime the name Piper shows up, things get changed. I'm just saying.
You can, you can look at the record and see what we did last time.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Yes. No. No.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item number fifteen, Avon Park Housing Authority Board Appointments. We have two new appointments. If I understand this correctly, there's two appointments to be made, and there's four applicants, is that correct?
Let me just remind you that the, um, that the mayor makes the appointment, and then the board votes to either approve or disapprove of the appointment.
Okay. Well, is there any, uh, recommendations by this board as to who the two names should be?
Well, I would like to recommend, because of the order of the application was placed, I've spoken to all of the applicants with the exception of one, and they've all have shown pretty much the same interest, that they're interested in the position. And so I think they are, they all are good applicants, I think that they will serve this board well. And I would love to go with the order of the application was submitted, because I think that they all would make a good applicant, uh, commissioner, and that would.
Number one and two, you're saying?
Um, well, the order was Brenda Gray, she put her application in first. And then the husband and wife, they put theirs in on the same day, which is Clifford and Linda Godfrey. They put theirs in on the same day. Um, I've spoke to both of them, and, um, one of them got notice of the opening before the other. Um, the husband got the word that there was an opening before his wife, and then his wife found out second. But they both submitted their application on the same day.
So which one of them are you suggesting? There can only be two.
I would suggest, um, Brenda Gray and Mr. Clifford Godfrey.
Clifford, okay. Any other suggestions?
I just have, uh, one question about Mr. Godfrey, it says on the, um, disclosure of interest, says he has a professional interest in or actually providing professional services to APHA. Does that mean it disqualifies him, or that does, what does that mean, Jerry? I've never seen that disclosure form on there before.
What was the question?
It's, so there's a disclosure of interest form that he filled out.
You have a page number?
Yeah, um. One twenty-eight, I believe. No, sorry. One, one thirty. I just didn't know if that disqualified him or how we're supposed to go about that.
Yeah, um, the only thing that disqualifies him are the things that were in the, um, in their charter or, uh, your code with regard to that or the statute. And, um, you know, the things that would be like the, um, um, there's a federal requirement, we're gonna, I guess you guys are gonna vet them after the fact or the background.
I see.
Some, somebody back there has got a phone that's not been silenced, that needs to be silenced.
As far as criminal history record check?
Yeah, all that stuff that, um.
Isn't that on the Housing Authority to do that?
Yeah.
I thought the discussion last time was that we had to do that, that we had to do the background check. Or do we just have to?
Kind of resolve that.
But we weren't gonna pay for it.
All right, we decided to.
I think we're, but we're responsible for saying whether or not they have one or they don't, right? And so we, as far as if we don't pay for it, then we have to rely on them to provide it, so would we require them to give us some kind of receipt that they have done that? Because I thought that fell on this board as far as whether or not they actually did the background check.
Yeah. Well, the only conflict I can think of is, you know, this, um, would be a, um, an office, if they had another office as a constitutional office, that would be a problem. Um, if they had, when the conflicts, like I said, with regard to the federal, uh, vetting, um, or state, then that would be a conflict. I don't know of any other conflict off the top of my head.
Okay.
But I'll start looking that up in a second.
Um, am I allowed to ask, Ms. Taylor, do you know, tell me if I'm not, please, so I don't get myself in trouble. Um, where he, he selected the professional interested in or actually providing professional services, do you know if he's actually providing services to them? I mean, is, is this maybe a misunderstanding, like maybe he's thinking he is?
That's what I'm thinking, I've, I've had.
Here, I'm assuming.
Like, I'm thinking maybe he thinks he.
His business.
He marked that he is professionally interested in the Housing Authority.
I'm, I'm thinking that was an error, because, no, I, you know, he never gave me the impression when I talked to him, when he came to me and told me he was interested in it. He never gave me the interest that he ever worked for them or had any type of professional interest in them whatsoever, so.
Well, Maria's here, Maria, do you know if, if he provides any services to APHA?
It's at the, Maria.
Your list is your list, and we wait for you to approve what you have, so if whomever you select, we can do the background check after that, we have no problem paying for that.
But he, he lists the name as.
Have not seen your documentation and who's applied, because I remain myself immune to my future bosses.
No, I mean, um, as far as APHA, it says he has a professional interest in Clifford F. Godfrey Senior, so in any of your paperwork?
As I have mentioned, I don't have a list of what you have, I do not vet them, you guys do in terms of approving, and then we go ahead and decide whether or not. You know, once you approve them, then we do the background check. But as I stand here right now, I don't have any knowledge to that.
Yeah, if, if he's got a, some kind of a business interest that would create a conflict under chapter one twelve, you would just have to stop that once, once he's appointed.
Okay. To alleviate that, perhaps in the future to alleviate that, if you gave us the names, then we can go ahead and vet them ourselves and present them to you, but as far as I understand, it's entirely a city council thing.
I, I think that would be helpful, but ultimately the decisions, mayors, but I think it'd be helpful to try and, you know, any information you all have with regard to business relationships they might have.
Our board and at least myself, I remain totally immune and agnostic to the selection that you all make.
The, um, the only other thing I think of that might be a problem off the top of my head would be, um, if they were, if this person is a, um, a tenant of the Housing Authority, they have to be in, in, um, compliance with the rent.
So if he, if, in other words, if he has a business and he provides services for APHA, it, it still doesn't affect anything, it's fine to still put him on the board.
Not at this moment.
That was my only, only question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other suggestions?
I only know, well, I know the one on the list, and then we had Ms. Blake on the Planning and Zoning Board for a short time, but I don't, I don't know anything in particular about the other two.
Okay, anything else?
And if Mr. Godfrey is not the selected one, I think it should be, um, the wife, Ms. Linda Godfrey. I'm, I'm going by the application submitted date, like I said. I, I know all the applicants, I think they all would serve well on the board. And, um, I just think that, to be fair, because all of them is interested, very interested. And only way I know how to be fair is according to their application date.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion, we select Brenda Gray, Clifford Godfrey, and in the event that he has a conflict and cannot serve, that we will select Sabrina Blake. Yeah, Brenda Gray and Clifford Godfrey, unless he has a conflict, it'll be Sabrina Blake.
So he's pointed, now you vote as to whether that's acceptable or not.
So do they need to make a second to that motion, or?
It's not a motion so much as if somebody needs to move to approve.
Okay.
Or, or reject.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item number sixteen, this will be an event and support request for MLK Day Parade. Yes, sir, we have, is this Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have any questions for Mr. Jones? You have anything you'd like to brief us on?
Um, appreciate last year, we know we had the hiccup, but, um, nothing, uh, nothing's changed, um. If we have the event the last twenty years, and we're hoping the city, you know, just provides what they do normally. Think I'm turning, uh, not sure if you got my packet with the road closures and everything, so I think I've got everything I need.
Okay.
I checked your date for you this year, just to make sure.
Thank you.
All right, so it says.
Coming in on a Saturday.
Right.
All right, so it says the city has allocated twenty-six hundred dollars in the budget, and your request is for three thousand, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is there any, uh, reason why we couldn't approve the three thousand over the twenty-six hundred?
I'm sure we can find four hundred dollars.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll, the motion, oh, sorry, I'll make the motion to approve D sixteen.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, I have a question here.
Go ahead.
Um, I was looking at the, um, the cost to the city, and, um, I was wondering, why is it that, um, we, we had an event that I was looking at, that it requested four public works, and we're closing down a whole Main Street. But we go over here and close down something that's smaller than Main Street, and the price is much different, opposed to four and five hundred dollars to do it, and then the MLK is, is close to a thousand. What's the purpose?
Might be because it's a holiday, maybe.
And it could also be.
Holiday pay?
Could, could also be the complexity of the, the, um, barricades, they call MOT, the, um, has to be done, we have to get somebody to do that on a holiday. There has to be somebody officially that can do that. Um, they have to be licensed, they have to be certified for MOT. Uh, so I mean, I think that's part of the, part of the expense, but I think.
Staff have anything to add?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Whenever you're ready. No problem.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item number seventeen, this will be event and support request for the Shining Stars Christmas Bike and Toy Giveaway. We have Mr. Herbert Sykes.
Good evening, council. I'm Herbert Sykes, the Minister of the Carolina Avenue Church of Christ at two ninety-six Frederick Corner Street, here in Avon Park, Florida. It's that time of the year again, we try with the city to do our best to lift up our community and support them in different, especially in this stressful time of year. And so once the giveaway stands before you, uh, asking for your support, as we always have for the same thing, uh, no, nothing extra, nothing more. Um, unless you see fit to do more, then we'll do more. But, uh, we, we want to be able to use the park as always, and, um, be able to get the grant support that you gave as always.
Okay. The request will be for thirty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Is there anyone, uh, any other questions?
Miss Pastor Sykes, um, how many bikes did you pass out last year?
Last year we did eighty, eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine bikes, and, uh, we, even, and after that, we ended up had to go buy four more. Um, it, 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 it just keeps growing every year, uh, the need just gets bigger. Uh, but we've, we've been able to pull it off, and hopefully we're gonna be able to do greater this year. We've, um, had some, uh, reached out for partnerships, as the board would always recommend you do, get, get as much help from other places as you can. And so we've been able to, uh, get partnership from New Core, New Core's sponsoring us as well this year. We're getting help from Publix, uh, as well as, as Walmart. Uh, we were able to figure out their system, took us a year to do it, we figured out their system, how to get in and, uh, apply for their grant support as well.
So, um, Pastor Sykes, um, is, is Walmart gonna be generous? You don't have to tell us the figure, but are they gonna be generous this year?
They said they're gonna do more than five hundred.
Five hundred what?
Dollars.
Oh, okay.
You know, so, no, nobody does what the city does, this, this, the city shows the community, I guess the city leads the way to show the community appreciation.
Hmm.
Uh, to build a community, to sustain the community, and let the community know that they're important.
Hmm.
And that's why the city is always a shining light. You guys are, are the epicenter of all what we do, and we make sure everybody know, and that's why we ask you guys to come out and see and participate in, uh, um, and, and just see how it goes, and, uh, talk to the people so they know, uh, where these things are coming from. They don't just automatically fall into place, but through the kinds of generation of their tax dollars coming back towards them and, and encouraging them at a time of year when they know that their budgets are very tight. And I think we all know that this year how tight budgets are, uh, so it's gonna make a huge difference with every little bit that we can do, uh, to help each family along the way, to have a brighter Christmas, and if you see the faces, um, uh, Benice, she was out there last year, she saw the faces of little kids and, uh, getting all those tricycles. Getting on those tricycles and little bikes. They couldn't wait to get them home. They're like, okay. And I say, we have put them together. I usually have them in a box. We put them together and they just couldn't wait to get on them. So I said, well, I guess we got to get uh, more people to help put the bikes together this year. Because they're not going to wait. They're going to get on the ride right then. So it's been really, really inspiring. And I just ask you guys to come out if you can and just be a part of it. Uh, you're sponsoring it. Come, you know, come and see. That's what I say. Come and see.
So um, Pastor Sykes, you expect to uh, beat your eighty nine um, limit this year?
Yeah, yeah, we want to try to. We yeah, I yeah, the the need is there. Our goal this year is is even hundred. That's our goal. Uh, we don't know. Um, like I say, we're really depending on New Core and and Publix. We was, I mean, Walmart, we were really asking, hoping Walmart will come by two thousand, but they said, you know, they're going to do better than five hundred. I'm like, uh, you know, so we 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 accept what we can get, you know. And the way it worked out was great, uh, as the city gave us like, uh, we we bought and then after we did, we did the line item. Itemized and the city reimbursed us for what we spent. They they set the cap. Uh, whatever you set the cap at, uh, that's what we go to and then we give you a line item. As to everything that was spent, so the city know and then from that you cut a check back to us to re to reimburse us for what we spend. And I think that's a good relationship. That way, there's no abuse there. There's nobody, you know, miss doing anything. I I like that approach. You ever thought of that? I want to give you kudos for that on the board that did it, but that was a good idea. Uh, have us spend our money first, ensure that we're committed. And then you reimburse us for the efforts that we make. So hopefully, if you can do more, then do more. If not, then we'll be happy with what you do.
Mrs. Sykes, where do you normally buy the uh, bicycles from?
We normally get them from Walmart.
Walmart.
And that's why we was hoping that they would do better, but you know, they said, well, I think I got a lot of people, you know, requesting support from them, so you know.
Ask them for bikes next time.
Yeah, yeah, that that's that's what we actually did. They said, no, we we just going to give you the money and whatever that'll buy us.
Okay.
So, but we really want to thank you guys. So if you can, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's on the twentieth of December and we're looking for volunteers out of here. Yeah, all right. Yeah, because we have a lot of kids and uh, yeah, it's it's twenty, it's going to be from ten to two o'clock. And uh, we need as many dollars as we can. It costs to keep the. No, no, we we set up at nine, but it starts from ten to two.
Let's keep comments down in the audience.
Yes, it's ten to two.
Yeah. All right, ten to two on December twentieth.
Mm-hmm. I got some flowers that they'll be out on the table out there for you.
Awesome.
Want to put some flags.
Did we already have a motion on this?
No, I don't think we did. I'll go ahead and make the motion though to approve D seventeen for the Shining Stars Christmas Bike and Toy Giveaway.
That's second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember.
Yes.
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 Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sykes. All right, item number eighteen, it's be interlocal agreement between Highlands County, Florida and the City of Avon Park for operation and maintenance of recreational facilities. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, this is our annual agreement. The county provides a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in funding because they fully recognize that their residents enjoy our amenities as well. And they want to help with the operations and maintenance of those parks facilities.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve D eighteen, the interlocal agreement with Highlands County.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number nineteen, it's be interlocal agreement for playground equipment funding from RPAC.
Yes, you may recall that when we hired a uh, playground inspector, they red tagged some facilities over at Donaldson Park. So those playground equipment pieces were removed. The city did apply for an RPAC grant. It's a fifty percent match. We were successful. We received thirty three thousand, seven hundred and twenty two dollars and this is the agreement to be awarded that.
Okay, make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number twenty, this will be Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four. F D O T road closure for event request, Bluegrass and Blueberry Festival.
Hi, I'm Jane Bralinger. My address is twenty four forty one West Nautilus Road, Avon Park, Florida.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm currently serving as president of Rotary Club of Avon Park. We're asking permission to be able to close the road and also to use Donaldson Park for the March twenty eighth event. Um, last year we were able to, we used a drone to try and tell how many people were there. We had about eight thousand people. Um, this year our goal, because we've moved it a month sooner, March twenty eighth, we'll still have people from up north here. Our goal is to try and reach the ten thousand. So anyway, we're asking permission to be able to close the road, use the park again. And we're going to get bigger. This year we're having a dunk tank. Maybe we'll put my husband, the pastor, in there. Who knows?
All right. And and what year is this, you know?
This is twenty twenty six, sorry.
No, 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 I mean, uh.
A year? Oh, fifteenth year. This is our big fifteen, yep.
All right, any questions?
Sure. Yes, yes. It goes up to, let me put my. I believe, yeah, it's just going to up to Memorial because we want to make sure that uh, it stops. You know, it stops up at Memorial is where they close it off and they close it off down to Lake Avenue. So we run it on that back road that's parallel one block over for the full length. That way we don't have any problems with folks getting through.
Looking forward to it.
Just do quick questions. Um, on your application, there was two boxes that you didn't fill out. The first one was, do you want to display or hang any banners or signs above the roadway? There was no yet.
We're not doing any above the roadway, but we are going to, would like to put them in the median again.
Okay, and then the other box that was blank was, will you be um, selling, serving or distributing alcohol?
There will be some vendors that sell it, but are not allowed to partake on the property at all during the event. So they do have a couple that have some alcohol in their uh, product. Everything that's put out there is all um, homemade crafts, homemade things like that. And then, of course, the food vendors, so. But the food vendors will not be serving alcohol.
So we just need to indicate that on the application. Do they still have to get the permit for that, Jerry, if they're selling it?
I'm sorry.
They're they're selling alcohol or that some of the vendors are selling alcohol. So do they still have to get a permit for that or no?
Yeah, they need a permit to sell alcohol.
It's just, it's just alcohol like in a jar of gelatin or something like.
Yes.
Not.
But still, still.
It's a sealed container.
Okay, it's still sale of alcohol. And if I'm wrong, then they'll tell you so when you apply for it.
They, yeah.
I'm sure I'm right.
They're the ones that have it, that have that product in it, they have certification to be able to sell that.
Okay.
Their license.
We've um, we usually adjust the the insurance associated with that. I don't know if that's the case here or not. But I just hope you say, let's say we have sale of alcohol for at city events, we usually require they adjust the uh, the insurance.
We probably need to look at last year's application, just make sure that, because I think they had alcohol last year, so.
Mm-hmm, we did.
Yeah.
All right, make a motion to approve Bluegrass and Blueberry Festival. Road closure with caveat, they have insurance to cover alcohol sales. Do we have a second? We have a motion. We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
On behalf of Rotary, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. It's be item number twenty one, Resolution twenty twenty five. Dash twenty five, adopting the revised budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Resolution in the City of Avon Park, Highlands County, Florida, adopting revised budget for fiscal year twenty thousand twenty four. And uh, to two thousand twenty five, providing for an effective date. You might want to change the typo in there. You have an S instead of a five, both the top and the thing there, but it's twenty twenty five.
Okay. Any questions on this? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty five?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Item number twenty two, this will be the cell tower lease amendment. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, you may recall, uh, last year you approved a lease with city switch to lease a small portion. I believe it was fifty four by fifty four over behind the sheriff's station.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they are asking to increase that footprint based on um, some permitting responses that we got from CFRPC to add some landscaping. They need a larger path for the electricity to run because the original pole that they were going to go off of does not work for them. So it's effectively just changing the site plan, making it slightly larger. And Jerry, do you want to talk about the assignment and assumption?
Uh, yeah, we went through a lot with regard to um, uh, what needed to happen to that. And they they did everything we asked for regarding to the changes and so on. Um, and verifications that that um, we required them to have.
Any questions?
Could you remind me again how much they're going to pay us rent for that?
I believe it's about eight hundred dollars a month and then there's a hundred and twenty five dollar colocation fee for each antenna. That goes on the tower.
Okay, and so. Jerry, how is that figured? Was that just figured according to, I don't know, some sort of formula? Or how do they come up with that amount? And I'm only, I'm only asking because I'm curious if that's going to increase the rent, if they increase the footprint.
I I don't know. That was um, Mark, we I I I suggested that we get, you know, an appraisal and the appraisal was done. And um, then I think after that, the the numbers were filled in by staff. I don't ever um, presume to state what should be the amounts.
Is that maybe something that we should probably look at to see if it's um, going to increase the amount of rent because of the amount of footprint we're increasing?
It's a negligible amount even, and it's only four thousand square feet total. It's it's a very small footprint.
Obviously, it won't interrupt the uh, operations there in any way, correct?
Correct.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, make a motion to approve the cell tower lease amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Yeah, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty three, this will be the first reading of ordinance twenty five dash twenty twenty five, comp plan text amendment. Jeff, whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Jeff Schmucker, uh, Regional Planning Council. Um, as usual, I've got a PowerPoint presentation. Um, won't kill you with it tonight, but. Um, always good to be able to see what we're talking about as the city clerk pulls that up. No problem. Um, as as she's doing that, I'll give a precursor. So this, this is a request that's uh, come down and with discussions with city staff in terms of uh, revisiting density uh, options in the downtown. Um, most of this council was not, I don't think, uh, on the dais at that time. I think this had come back up uh, originally around two thousand fourteen or so, we had brought some amendments to the city. Uh, looking at density upgrades in the downtown as a means to bringing more folks to the downtown, creating a vibrant downtown. As an economic driver for downtown, having people in downtown. Um, that had never moved anywhere. Um, over the last several years, we've had a number of requests um, uh, over that time. Um, you know, what can we do with some of the buildings downtown? What can we do with the upstairs downtown of some of the buildings? Um, the issue has always been uh, the density. So I just wanted to kind of give that precursor to uh, the presentation that we'll give on this tonight. Um, so the the PowerPoint is up. Um, it, I'm going to give you both sides. It's it's a comprehensive plan amendment, but it's also a companion uh, land development code amendment as well. Um, but with that, uh, as I just mentioned, some of the uh, the items that increased density would support in the downtown. Uh, more efficient land use patterns. Where's most of your infrastructure? It's in the core parts of the city. So there's some business uh, impacts with this as well in terms of cost and and maintenance of of that infrastructure. Having that core condensed downtown area to support that um, uh, is very supportive of of having additional density in the downtown area. Also provides those opportunities for additional affordable housing, opportunities for new and redevelopment areas that can support economic growth in the downtown, um, as well as the increased accessibility. So uh, more folks downtown, living near services downtown, provides those those opportunities for folks to get to good services and in other uh, places in the downtown area. Next slide. Um, so in the city's code today, in the comprehensive plan, uh, what most of the downtown is made up of is a future land use category called downtown commercial, uh, that allows up to sixteen dwelling units per acre for multifamily residential. Um, however, there's an inconsistency in the zoning, which is the land development code portion of this. Um, the companion zoning uh, that you see with the downtown commercial future land use would be a C four mixed use zoning district. But in the code today, that only allows up to four dwelling units. So while the future land use would allow sixteen, the C four zoning district only allows up to four dwelling units for multifamily residential. Uh, when we just look at some numbers uh, with that, with the restriction of the straight zoning of C four for the four units an acre. Uh, a lot of the properties in the downtown are half acre to maybe an acre. Uh, so what you're looking at in terms of total multifamily residential development would be on a half acre, two, two dwelling units. One acre, four dwelling units and then a two acre lot or so or greater, eight units or more. Next slide. Um, so the proposal um, for the land development code portion first would be uh, to amend the uh, the density in the C four mixed use zoning district to be consistent with the downtown commercial future land use, which would be sixteen dwelling units per acre. Um, and then in the comp plan portion of this, the downtown commercial future land use, not changing the allowance for the sixteen dwelling units per acre as it stands today for multifamily residential, uh, but amending it to allow potentially up to forty dwelling units per acre uh, specific to multifamily residential with the caveat that if you wanted to come in with a density greater than the sixteen dwelling units per acre, you would have to apply for a zoning of planned unit development. And that would give the city and staff an opportunity to look at that site uh, when they come in. If that would be an appropriate area for a mixed use development, a multifamily development. Um, that could support that type of development greater than the sixteen units per acre. Next slide. And again, just some numbers, um, adding that um, up, as we looked at it before, at the four units an acre, uh, you would have a result on a half, one acre and two acre lot of uh, uh, two, four and eight. Of course, with the sixteen uh, dwelling units per acre, uh, if the zoning were to be amended, you could get eight units on a half acre. Uh, sixteen on a full acre and then uh, thirty two on two acres. However, if we were to look at um, proposing the amendments to have that increased density, which would require that planned unit development zoning. Um, you could on a half acre lot get up to potentially twenty dwelling units. Uh, one acre, forty dwelling units and then on a two acre lot or more, a minimum of eighty dwelling units. Next slide. So just wanted to show a few graphics here. I know the the screens are small, but um, the the graphic that you see at the top. Um, a multifamily residential development at sixteen dwelling units an acre, this might not be something you see directly on Main Street, but you might see just off of Main Street, but having some opportunities for multifamily housing at sixteen dwelling units per acre. That would be the the feel and the the size or intensity of the development you might expect to see. The uh, the graphic over on the right hand side, um, mixed use, very similar to what we we see in downtown. What we see on the main street with uh, businesses on the bottom floor and then potential residences on the uh, the second and third floors. Um, this would be something that would be closer to a twenty four or twenty five to to forty dwelling units per acre. And again, if if this were to be allowed, it would it would have to come in as a PUD because you would be exceeding that sixteen dwelling units per acre. Um, uh, for the, for the uh, for the land use and the 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 straight zoning of a C four. Um, and then finally, we just. And then finally, we just use one more example of a potential just straight multifamily residential development coming in, again, at the 25 to 40 units an acre, which would exceed that 16. Again, something like this that might be very supportive of additional residential growth in the downtown under that PUD, if it were to come in at something that would be greater than the 16 units an acre. So these are just a few examples. And again, these, these would, these are all taken on a, on a one acre lot scenario to kind of show you what something like that might look like. Next slide. So just want to run through quickly what the, what the text would look like. So with the comprehensive plan amendment proposal, this would be to Policy 1.6 and the future land use element. Policy 1.6A, the red text that you see there, it, it's essentially providing some clarity on the permissible uses in the downtown commercial, noting that the single family would be specific to attached, attached units, multifamily residential uses, including apartment units, and then above-ground-floor apartments. Policy 1.6B would be the amendment to the, the density, which would be that increase to potentially 40 dwelling units per acre, but having the caveat there within that policy that any density is greater than 16 dwelling units per acre would require a PUD zoning. Next slide. Just looking at the land development code portion of this, the only amendments in Article 2 would be adjusting the, the table of land uses. And what you see there, and again, I apologize, it's very small to see on the screen, but formerly there was residential units above businesses. That was listed under single-family residential. That's really a multifamily use. And what we did there is we moved it down under the category of multifamily residential dwelling units, and we changed the title to above-ground-floor apartments. And again, that's consistent with the language that's currently in the comprehensive plan for downtown commercial. The same permissions have been carried over in terms of the permitted uses in those zoning districts. And the one addition that we have here would be the apartment buildings of five units or more currently is not permitted in the downtown. That would be proposed, again, looking at some of those examples of potentially bringing in some of that multifamily residential development in the downtown, introducing the apartment building uses, that would be five units or more in the C4, and of course, they would also be available through a PUD. Next slide. Again, some cleanup here. In Article 2, this would be the table of development standards. To note here, you see the C4 MF on the left-hand side. It currently shows that the maximum density is four dwelling units per acre. The proposal here would be to go to 16 with the asterisk in the footnote in the bottom, that any residential density is greater than the 16 dwelling units per acre would be required to come in as a planned unit development. Next slide. And the last one with this, this is a little bit of cleanup in the city's planned unit development section. PUDs, when they were initially drafted, there were things called DRIs years ago, developments of regional impact, large-scale developments. PUDs were a way to kind of address some of those large-scale developments, but on a smaller scale. However, they were still drafted as being always mixed-use or large-scale developments. That is not the case. A PUD is a planned unit development. It is a flexible zoning district. We use this where we don't have straight zoning to accommodate what's going on. So Section 7.04, the intent and purpose, we've simply removed here that it has to be a mixed-use and on a large scale. And then also in Section 7.0403, the minimum site area, again, minimum site area now would be five acres. Again, that is, that is not standard in a lot of codes, becomes restrictive for your PUD. So again, consistent with the, the First Amendment in 704 with being a large scale, just removing that minimum size requirement. And the purpose for amending this at this point would be if there is an opportunity in the downtown and the city does want to move forward with increasing that density in the downtown, and the request would be that you then have to come in with a PUD, we might find ourselves with half acre lots, two acre lots. This obviously would be inconsistent with that. So this is a little bit of housekeeping and cleanup separate to, or I guess I would say consistent with the amendments for the density part of this. So let me just kind of wrap that up. The first item that you all are, are taking on first would be the comprehensive plan portion of this. And the amendments there would be changing the downtown density, commercial, future land use designation or category to allow potentially up to 40 dwelling units per acre with the caveat that if you were to come in with a density greater than 16, you would have to apply for a PUD to achieve that. So with that, we'll, we'll stand to answer any questions that you guys have on this.
Couple of questions for you. One slide back, I believe. Yes, sir. So we're sticking with the 800 square feet per unit in the multifamily C4?
Yeah, and that's fairly typical.
And then the, the PUD, is it that getting struck out, or is that just an asterisk that it could be changed to anything?
So we, we are striking that out. We've never really understood why that's there because the PUD really is that negotiating flexible zoning. So
Okay.
no reason for it to live in your, your development.
We don't want to have a standard size per unit.
For the PUD, it would be negotiated, but typically when any development comes in, we use a baseline. So if we're looking at multifamily development that's coming in, we're referencing the code, whether it's 500 square feet or 800 square feet in this case, we would use that as a baseline. And then if the developer wanted to say, we want 600, you know, we'll justify why you want 600 and how, how would we meet that? But again, because it's a flexible zoning district, we can have that negotiation.
Gotcha. Now, the, the maximum building height, is it still at 35 feet? I could have swore that we had raised that.
No, I think we kept that at 35. I know there were some discussions about that a number of years ago. I think there was some discussion with fire about that, making sure apparatus, making sure fire flows and a number of different things. But that's something that we could potentially look at also down the road if we find ourselves restricted, but there's an opportunity to do that.
35 feet generally limits them to three stories, is that correct?
Uh, max. You're not going to get, yeah.
Yep.
Max.
Okay. So I know that we were trying to push to have the capability to do five stories. I don't want to say that's what the new, the new ladder truck will do, just a question of when that will be. So if possible, staff could get with fire and see when we'll have that, when we'll have the capability to service that, maybe we could look at changing this so that we can get a higher density that way.
I have one question for you, Jeff. Once we go past the 16 units, what are going to be the requirements as far as parking?
Great question. So the downtown right now has an exemption to parking for your non-residential uses. For anything for residential, staff has always required that there's parking on-site for those uses. So that would be something that we would certainly look into. In a lot of cases, we haven't had a greater density or the need to, to really, or find, find a challenge with that. But if we're talking about 16 dwelling units per acre, we're, we're definitely going to have to consider that. And so that, the developer's going to have to consider that. The reason why we've always required that is no one's going to want to buy a residential unit or rent a residential unit, knowing that I'm going to go get groceries, and I'm going to be parking on the side of the road, two blocks away, and it's raining, and now that's my only place to park. So we're very cognizant of that. We're also cognizant of the fact that the city does have an exemption for parking in the downtown, and there's reasons for that as well for using parking areas. But we've always been very cognizant about making sure that there's parking for the residential units.
I'd like me to read it, just the ordinance and short title into the record.
Sure.
Ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, amending the future land use element of the City of Avon Park Compets Plan, specifically amending Policy 1.6 pertaining to the city's downtown commercial future land use category, providing for clarity on permissible uses, and allowing for residential density up to 40 dwelling units per acre for multifamily developments, providing for transmission to Florida Commerce for review and compliance, provide for servability, provide for conflict, and provide for an effective date. I'd like to point out there's a typo in the third line there. Avon Park, Park is transposed there. It needs to be fixed before we publish the short title.
Sorry, Jerry, can you point that out? In the short title itself?
In the short title, yeah. Avon Park.
I, yep, not a park.
Thank you.
So if we approve as-is, right now, there's asterisk in every column. So there's literally no minimums in any column. You say that you're going to consider it, but how does that process work and?
Are you referring to the PUD portion?
Correct, yeah.
So, so right now, under a PUD, for whatever that means, maximum density, 16 units per acre. And then the asterisks were all there, that C text regulation in Article 7. I mean, that's the only reason for that, that asterisk there. I mean, there was, there was nothing really supporting in the development standards table to, to provide any guidance on that. And actually, Article 7 does not give any guidance on your development standards either. So it's a bit nebulous.
Okay. And you don't think it would be wise to establish some minimums there?
Well, the reason we generally don't have minimums or have development standards associated with the PUD again, is to have that flexibility. If we put that in there, the connotation may be is that you have a standard, and that's what it is. But PUDs can be different. PUDs could be strictly commercial. They could be strictly industrial.
Right.
So to have a minimum floor area, don't know what that would mean.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, Jeff, is this something you recommended for the county, or they already had it and you, you offering it to us?
Great question, too. So we had done research throughout the region, and actually, a lot, a lot of this language is some language that we actually had worked with the city of Sebring on. And Sebring has been enjoying new growth in their downtown as part of this. And actually, the 40 dwelling units per acre was a number that we had landed on with them as a reasonable number with the, the market, the way that it was. Now, of course, we don't, we haven't seen anything come in in Sebring area yet, the full 40 dwelling units per acre. But for those smaller lots, it gives that opportunity to get those, those extra units on some of those, the smaller properties. So yes, we did some research in the region, and I think in your package, too, we provided some comparables to some other cities in Polk County as well.
So, go ahead.
If I may, Chief Marcy texted me, the new fire truck is expected the beginning of 2028.
So kind of back to what the mayor was saying with the 800 square foot a unit, could we specify like a PUD residential and put some specifications in there? I know you said it's negotiable, but I'm not sure how everybody's negotiation skills are going to be.
Well, anyone who comes to the table now, so even with the way the code is written right now, if you remember, we just had a development project come through, and they came through as a PUD. There's not a standard that's set on that. So if, if we put a standard in there, it can be a baseline, but if we did that, I think we would have to establish PUD for all of those different types of categories. And then probably take some time. And what would be the rational nexus for saying that a PUD industrial, the minimum floor area is, I mean, I don't even know where you would start.
Yeah, I think the idea is that if you build apartments, you don't want an apartment being a closet.
Well, you don't. And your, your 800 square feet per unit is actually a pretty good-sized unit for an apartment. There'd be health code requirements and other things that, building code requirements that would go into that as well, minimum use and space requirement. So this certainly exceeds that, and we certainly always follow that as a baseline.
So when, when you're saying downtown, is this strictly on Main Street, or this is, how far from Main Street does this extend?
So right now, it would be basically your, your commercial future land use and your C4, your mixed-use zoning districts. They extend about a block or two on both the north and the south sides of Main Street. So it is, Main Street as a core, but both to the north and both to the south. There's opportunity for that to potentially grow, and that could extend even more. Right now, it's, it's essentially two blocks north and south of, of Main Street.
So I noticed on, in one of the, in the, I don't know what that is, but right beside the I2, I can't, my page is kind of blurry, but you have a D on one of them that's requiring a site development plan. Would it be wise to require a site development plan for any of these if we're trying to, you know, basically redo Main Street? Just to give us a little more say in that, or to make sure it's kind of staying with the character and the design of?
So for instance, like the above-ground-floor apartments, where we've got a C4 and it's straight permitted.
Right.
Yeah, that was just a carryover from what the, the, the current permissions are right now. They're, they're straight permitted as residential units above businesses. I would think typically where we would have a site development come in, it would be up to the council. If we want to see that come in as a D, we could certainly do that. So if you actually have a, a new development, I mean, if there's a building there and there's a second floor already, and they want to establish it as, as apartments, I mean, that wouldn't essentially be a site plan review. But if you've got a vacant lot, and you've got something new coming in, and you did want to have a site development review on that, it's reviewed and approved by the planning and zoning board at this point. So we could certainly do that if that's the council's wish. We just simply carried over the permissions from where they are today.
If, if you do it tonight, we can read, you can read it into the first reading, and it wouldn't have to be amended later.
Yeah, I think we could, I mean, even before adoption, this, this will be at least another month because the land use portion of this, we'll have to go to the state, make sure we're clear there. But if it's something that the council would want to consider, we can look at that and then bring that back before adoption.
Well, I'm just simply saying they could, they could add that change in the motion.
Yes, yes, correct.
Because part of the site development plan is like the parking concerns that Mr. Bernard was saying, and all of that's addressed in that.
Yeah, and, and we do that anyway. So I mean, there, if there would be a site development, it would just be staff reviewing it and making sure that they're meeting all of those requirements. So if you're coming in as a straight C4 zoning, and we want to develop a site, and it's going to have retail on the bottom, and it's going to have a number of apartments on the top, they have to meet all those development standards. You know, are they going to have to have stormwater on the site? Are they going to have parking on the site? You know, making sure that all those things are met. So I mean, that's already being done. If, if we want to put it as a D where it goes before the planning and zoning board for their review and then their approval, I mean, other than us saying this probably should not be approved, and then putting it in front of the planning and zoning board for some reason, and then they approve or deny it, making sure that there's a basis for that. So just something to consider.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion with that change?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to approve the first reading for ordinance 25 dash 2025 with the noted change to require a site development plan.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Last call for questions.
Can I interrupt real quick? Was this 2025, 25?
Yeah, it's 25 dash 2025.
Okay. For the future land use part. So what you're talking about is the zoning portion of this. So let's, let's step away from that for one second.
So then change the motion?
Yes, let's, yep.
Okay, so we need to actually make a motion for?
Do I need to make a motion to amend my motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the motion I just made and strike out the comment about the D, the site plan development requirement.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll continue in a second.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody happy with that motion there?
Um, I just wanted to ask, sorry, go ahead.
I was just seeing if it was correct.
So if she wants to add the site development plan, that would go before the planning and zoning. But that's something you're already doing. So it's almost like, it's, it's double work basically on one project. Is that right?
There's, there's situations where, and this is something we've talked about for years, the D that's in the table of uses because it goes to the planning and zoning board. We don't want to put the city in a position that, you know, they make a denial on something that should otherwise be approved. But there are cases where you have something that might need more scrutiny and review, and it does bring the public out. So if it is something that puts it in, into the public eye for review, just so they're aware of it, that's never a bad thing. But generally, yes, the, the development committee group is, is already reviewing this from a technical level. And if we're bringing something forward, we're generally saying, yes, we've vetted this out. This is good to go. Or, you know, this, this is a reason why maybe you might not want to consider this, so.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for ordinance 26 dash 2025.
Amendment for that.
Amendment for the 25 dash 2025.
Okay, so we have a motion for the amendment. We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call and roll.
Yes. Throw me off. You throw me off when you say me first.
Yes.
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 No, I made a motion.
Okay, now the original motion. We have a motion in a second.
As amended.
As amended. Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Are we ready for twenty six dash twenty twenty five?
Yeah, was, so was that?
That was twenty five dash twenty twenty five, the comp plan text amendment.
Right, in twenty six, twenty twenty five.
That was the second one you just did as amended with the site development plan requirement.
No, I didn't make a motion for that one yet. I made an amendment to the twenty five dash twenty twenty five.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna read ordinance twenty six dash twenty twenty five into the record.
Do, do we want to just clarify twenty five, twenty twenty five before we read twenty six? Just to make sure. Yeah. So um, twenty five, twenty twenty five is simply the future land use amendment, which would address policy one point six. If we could go back a couple more slides, Melissa. Keep going. Keep going. Right here. It would be simply the amendments that are addressing just the permissions within the uh, downtown commercial future land use. And then one point six B, which would be the inclusion of the uh, forty dwelling units per acre with the caveat to go to sixteen. So this, this, this is the only thing that's involved in twenty five, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so.
Twenty six?
Sorry, I'm.
Okay, let me go ahead. It's an ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code, specifically amending Article two, Table two point oh four, point oh one A. Providing cl- clarity on permissible uses in the C four mixed use zoning district and amending Table two point oh four, point oh one B. Increase in the maximum residential density for multifamily residential in the C four mixed use zoning district from four dwelling units per acre to sixteen dwelling units per acre. Including the opportunity to seek residential densities greater than sixteen dwelling units per acre for multifamily developments. And amending Article seven, section seven point oh four, point oh one, removing quote, mixed use unquote and quote, large scale unquote from the intent and purp- of, and purpose of the planned unit developments. And amending section seven point oh four, point oh three, acknowledging no minimum size requirement for property zone planned unit development. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for effective date.
Okay, are we ready for a motion for ordinance twenty six dash twenty twenty five?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty six dash twenty twenty five with the change to add a site development plan requirement.
All right, second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up be D twenty five is the ordinance twenty seven dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, um. This is a update to the city's ten year water supply plan um, and uh, comprehensive or associated comprehensive plan amendments associated with that plan update. Uh, next slide. Uh, just real briefly background. Twenty years ago, uh, Florida legislature had made a number of sig- number of changes to um, chapters one sixty three and three seventy three, which uh, were, were brought forward to, to make those uh, links between uh, water supply planning and, and community development a little stronger. As part of that, uh, local governments are required to adopt a ten year water supply plan. It essentially looks out over a ten year and a twenty year period. Um, where do you sit today in terms of your current um, demand? Uh, where do you sit in ten years? Where do you sit in twenty years based on uh, your land use changes, based on your development approvals? I think we had some conversations about this uh, recently. Do we have enough water to support the development that might be coming in? Uh, your water supply plan generally addresses those things in coordination with utilities and other departments. Um, and as part of that, um, the city has to adopt a ten year water supply plan. Following the regional water supply plan by the Water Management District. In this case, the last one that was adopted was in twenty twenty, November of twenty twenty. And so the city is now updating their ten year water supply plan. Next slide. Just in general, uh, what's in your plan? It's uh, requirements for compliance with the district's regional water supply plan. It's an account of your current supply and demand. That's based on your annual supply reports that are issued uh, to the Water Management District by your, your utility department. Inventory of the city's systems and facilities. Uh, we base that on the water and wastewater master plan that was recently completed by, I believe it was Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Um, there's also an outline of the city's uh, continuing conservation practices. And then uh, the future demand, and that is based on population projections. And I'm just gonna run through those real quick with you to show you how we, we get to the uh, the conclusions and the analysis. Next slide. So current water supply and demand, um, city is within an area called a SWUCA. That's the Southern Water Use Caution Area. Your level of service standard can't exceed a hundred and fifty gallons of water per person per day. Uh, your adopted level of service standard in your comprehensive plan is a hundred and twenty, so you're, you're good there. Current number of uh, metered connections is eight thousand four hundred and seventy three. That's based on uh, the twenty twenty four public supply annual report issued by the city to the Water Management District. Uh, your permitted withdrawal with your water use permit, which is uh, effective through uh, twenty twenty nine is about two point three million gallons a day. And your current daily demand is about two point one million gallons of water per day. Next slide. Your five year capita uh, water demand over the last uh, five years. As you can see, the numbers on the right hand side, uh, you're meeting that level of service standard. You're lower than that hundred and fifty within the SWUCA. And you're also lower than your hundred and twenty uh, gallons of water per person per day. For our calculations to, to project forward, we take a five year average of that. So your five year average is ninety five gallons of water per person per day. Next slide. The population projection figures, uh, we work with the Water Management District's figures uh, for consistency with their review. In twenty twenty, um, the functional population, which is not just your, your permanent residents, it's also your tourists, commuters in and out, uh, but that functional, functional population was um, uh, just, just north of twenty two thousand folks. In twenty thirty, um, approaching twenty three thousand. And then in twenty forty, the projection is to be um, just more than twenty three thousand population. Next slide. So when we bring all that together, um, your functional population over the ten and the twenty year period, using the uh, five year average, which is that ninety five as the multiplier. Your, your projected average demand um, leaves you with a surplus of water of about a hundred and ninety thousand gallons by twenty thirty and then by twenty forty, a hundred and fifty four thousand gallons. Uh, do you want to note that bottom uh, row that you see here? Uh, you can see that you're into that ninety percent of your capacity at that point. I mean, you, you guys are pretty close already. Did want to note again, the water use permit is up for uh, renewal in twenty twenty nine. Um, so next slide. Go ahead and go to the next slide. We'll talk about conservation in a second. In terms of the conclusions, and, and you guys are doing really good on the conservation side of that. I don't mean to just skip over that. But really, the conclusions are, is that you're meeting your level of service. There is a projected growth that you are appearing to meet in ten years and in twenty years. And you're encouraged to upgrade your facilities, which I think the city does a great job of through your capital improvement projects that you look at every five years in your schedule. But, but ultimately here, um, it looks like you're going to meet your demands right now. But it's, it's, it's definitely emphasized that as part of those negotiations with the Water Management District in twenty nine or probably leading up to um, looking at what those options are gonna be in terms of potentially increasing capacity. Cause we know that there's additional growth coming. And that's a.
I, I think you need treatment plant expansion as well.
And, and there could be wastewater that's associated with that. So um, that could be something that staff assists with utilities as well, looking forward down the road.
You might want to uh, talk to public works about that.
Uh, next slide. So with all of that said, um, all, essentially you guys are, are, are pretty good, pretty good condition. Shows that over the next ten and twenty year period that you'll, you'll have capacity available. But the only amendments at this time would be updating um, four elements, the infrastructure element, conservation element, intergovernmental coordination, as well as capital improvements element. And really, the only um, suggested amendments here would be to make sure that we update that reference to the Water Management District's regional water supply plan, making sure that this new plan is consistent with that. So uh, with that, we'll answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions? Seeing none. We have read ordinance twenty seven in the record.
Not yet.
Go ahead.
An ordinance to the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending this Avon Park comprehensive plans, specifically amending the infrastructure conservation, intergovernmental coordination and capital improvements elements, based on the city's ten year water supply facilities work plan incorporated herein. Providing for transmission to the Florida Commerce for review and compliance. Providing for severability, provide for conflict and provide effective date.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty seven dash twenty twenty five. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Ordinance twenty eight dash twenty twenty five. Whenever you're ready, Jeff.
All right, last but not least. Okay, so um, this is an item that pertains to uh, recent Senate Bill nine fifty four for certified recovery residences. Um, and this requires local governments to adopt an ordinance acknowledging uh, two things. One, recognizing certified recovery residences and then also providing a process to apply for reasonable accommodations from land use regulations uh, for the operation of a certified recovery residence. Uh, this was passed um, by the legislature and then signed by the governor uh, in June of this year. And it's required to be adopted by January first of this year. So this is, this is a requirement um, of all local governments across the state. Next slide. I guess maybe just real quick before getting into, to definitions. These are essentially uh, uses that you already serve in the city today, group homes, things of that nature. Um, this would be a certified residence. They would be required to come in and get a certification from the city that they are a certified provider for group home, a community residential home, foster home type of use. But with the new Senate Bill nine fifty four, we have to bring this into the code. So we're offering uh, proposing several definitions consistent with the Senate Bill. Uh, one would be recovery residences. That would essentially define what a recovery residence is. Again, as I said, is a residential housing unit that serves a licensed treatment facility. Also bringing in a definition, uh, defining what a certified recovery residence is. And again, this would be a recovery residence that has a valid certificate for, for compliance to operate a certified recovery residence. Next slide. A definition that's not in your um, ordinance that's in front of you tonight. We decided that it would be best to go ahead and add, what is reasonable accommodation? The second portion of the bill is that reasonable accommodation has to be made um, for a certified recovery residence. What does that mean? It's essentially a method to allow an individual or provider uh, to provide um, reasonable uh, accommodation for the operation of that use. An example might be, uh, we need an ADA ramp in the front yard uh, to allow folks to get into the unit. That might be within a setback area. That would typically require someone to come forward and get a variance from the city. Reasonable accommodation, a necessary reasonable accommodation uh, would have to be allowed through this new Senate bill. So if someone is a certified residence, they come in, we need some form of reasonable accommodation for our operation. City staff has to move that through administratively. But we felt that it would be necessary to have a reasonable accommodation. So if you guys are in, in, in tune with that, we'll make sure that that is in the ordinance moving forward, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. Next slide. The proposal here is to amend Article um, or sorry, section two point zero two, uh, zero eight, adding uh, certified recovery residences. And again, it would be adding them to the section that already exists in the code for adult family care homes, uh, adult daycares, uh, family foster uh, homes. Um, and that would provide language consistent with Senate Bill nine fifty four, including language regarding the process for applicants to seek reasonable accommodation. Next slide. The other amendment would be in the uh, table of uses, two point oh four, oh one A. And again, this would just be recognizing um, certified recovery residences, again, under that uh, use category of group care facility in the city's table of land uses. And so with that, we'll answer any questions. Um, I know the language that you have in front of you, we've coordinated with the city attorney on this. And Jerry, I'll let you speak to this as well. I know you've done some research. If you have anything you want to add. We do anticipate there's gonna be a form that's probably gonna be needed at some point.
Yes, there will be. Somebody will need to make up a form. We're reading in, into the uh, record. It's an ordinance of the city of Avon Park, Florida, amending the Avon Park Unified Land Development Code relating to certified recovery residences. Specifically amending Article two, Table two point oh four, point oh one A, Table of Land Uses, Article two, Section two point oh two, point oh eight. Adult uh, family care home, family care home, family daycare home and family foster home. And amending Article nine definitions, providing for severability, provide for codification, providing for effective date.
Anything else, Jerry?
No, I think you covered it.
All right. Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty eight dash twenty twenty five. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty five. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
So um, made uh, some updates to your um, animals code. And to streamline, modify it and to also provide for um, rulings by the special magistrate as opposed to going to county court. And um, that's the purpose of this, is to make those changes. I'll read it in the record. It's an ordinance, amend city code, chapter fourteen of city code, animals to update definitions, et cetera. Update statute and administrative code references, streamline and modify the previous code. Providing for changes, additions to definitions, providing for changes to administration and enforcement procedures. Providing for changes to impoundment procedures and fees. Providing for changes to regulations of animals, providing to changes uh, to penalties and changes to hearing procedures, providing for codification, repeal conflicting codes. Ordinances and resolutions, provide for severability, scrivenor's errors and an effective date. Questions, Jeff?
I, I did have a question. So what, what was the conflict that was found that caused all this to change?
The uh, special magistrate didn't feel like he had um, jurisdiction because the previous code provide for going to the county court, which is a really cumbersome procedure, to say the least.
Okay. And so the red lines in here and adding the, the red. Animal. I don't know, maybe this is just me being silly, taking offense to this, but animal means any dumb li- living, dumb creature.
Straight out of the statute definition.
Really?
Yeah, I didn't make that up myself.
It means they don't talk. Deaf and dumb. That's what it usually means. But I saw the same thing.
I was like, wait a minute, cause there's a lot of animals that are actually smarter than people.
I, I would just point out that it said pretty much the same thing. I just took it directly from the statute and literally.
Okay, I got you.
Mayor, I, I have a question and I've been getting a lot of um, complaints and concern. And it probably has nothing to do with this particular um, line item and the magistrate in the county. I mean, the city of Avon Park. So, but maybe Mr. Burr can help me out. I've been getting a lot of complaint about and, and maybe Mr. Burr can, and tell me where I need to start. I've been getting a lot of complaints about um, animals in restaurants and in the the Walmart shopping basket. And they're, they don't want to put their grocery in a basket where a dog has been laying. Where do I start there, Mr., Mr. Burr?
Well, I, I believe we have the authority to uh, regulate animals in restaurants. It's, it's a health code, public safety. It's, it's a health code, public safety.
Well, as I was looking at this, it does say that is a sanitary health code. Well, maybe I didn't know.
I know a lot of people do it.
So a lot of people doing it, and a lot of people is complaining about it. They say they know they love their animals, they animal lovers, they know that. Just because they're animal lover don't mean that everybody else is animal lovers. And so one of the problems that the lady that she brought to me was she, she sat there and watched a dog stand up in Walmart, in, on a pad, in the shopping cart. And when that shopping cart was done, she quite there, she was more than sure is going to be put with the rest of them. Now someone else is going to come and get their grocery and put in that same shopping cart. And I, I've started to go to restaurants here in the area, and there's dogs sitting up at the table like a human. You know, I'm not no big dog lover. If I had to choose a cat or a dog, it's going to be a dog. But I don't want to go to a restaurant and a dog is sitting at the table across from me lapping out of a plate. Because who, who, who's to know, next time I may get that same plate. So what, what, what can I do? Where can I start here in the city with this, not defending the dog lovers?
Well, if the, if the council would like me to check into it and make any changes that are necessary to try and prevent that, then I would, I would do that and bring it back to you.
So this ain't, this ain't a Walmart issue, this, this could be a county issue.
I mean, ultimately it's up to the purveyor to basically enforce it. It's we, we work by complaints. Generally that, you know, they would just simply say it's prohibited. Do that and need to stop.
If it's a restaurant, couldn't she call the health department or something to notify them since I'm sure that's not allowed?
The obvious question is how many of them are registered service animals? And if they're a registered service animal, not a whole lot you can do about it.
And I asked Walmart, I said, how do you determine whether it's a service animal or not? And Walmart, the greeter at the doors personally told me that they are not allowed to ask.
Right.
Well, a lot of people abuse that and they'll call it a service animal. And it's really an emotional support animal as opposed to a service animal.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I make that pretty clear in the new definition that I put in here.
Except give your name and address to the record, please.
My name is Angelica Simpson. I am at 370 Prof. Y'all changed it recently. It was formerly 410 Ernest C. Sims, now 370 Prof. Sims Street in Avon Park.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead with your question.
So my question is, okay, I have a service animal. And ADA states that I cannot, that people cannot ask me what the service animal is for, but they can ask me, how does it assist me? It can't tell me about my, it cannot tell me about my, um, my disability or anything like that. So I have seen pet friendly ones where they will allow the animal out the door, but never, I've never seen one inside.
Inside where?
The restaurants.
Oh, all the time.
I've not, well, I've not seen it, but you know, I, I personally don't want to, I don't like to bring mine inside the restaurant anyway. That's just my personal, you know, conviction. If you know what I mean.
Correct, I understand. And, and, and don't get me wrong, ma'am, I understand why people bring them in the store. They brought them with them in their car. It's hot, they don't want to leave them outside in the car. I get all of that. But just because you're an animal lover, that don't mean everybody. I tell people all the time, and people laugh at this, the average black person are afraid of dogs. Okay, the average black person, I said average, they are afraid of dogs.
I, I can see for both sides of the coin for that. Yes, because mine is a big black dog, and so I try to be careful where I carry him. Because of my, you know, because of that. The thing is, it's just trying to find a way to, shall I say, it's like finding a balance. You don't want to ban them completely, because yeah, if you, you know, it's illegal to keep your car running with AC on? But if you have a dog in there, you got to.
Well, my, 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 my thing to that is if, if, if they're not allowed in a restaurant or a store, leave them at home. You don't have to worry about leaving them in a hot car. Leave them at home in an air conditioned building.
Okay, but sometimes they might have this, I'm, I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate. Just there's sometimes there's dogs that have anxiety issues. Okay, and I've seen some of those, and you don't want them, just leave them there for four hours, you know, unless there's somebody there. Because it, some of them may, that, you know, they may come from shelters, they may come from other thing, you know, other places. You don't know where that animal's from.
And here's my thing to that. Don't put your problems on someone else. I can understand the service dog and why, you know.
I agree.
Service dog, there's nothing we can do about him, okay, or her.
But I'm just saying.
But when you go and try to think that all dogs has the same privilege as service dogs, now we got a problem.
I'm not saying that, ma'am. I'm not. All I'm saying is that them leaving them home, sometimes it might exasperate the situation at home. I'm not saying they can come, because the law is the law. And, and the establishment usually establishes who can and cannot. Now, I know I can take my animal to Home Depot, I can take them to Lowe's.
Your time has been.
Okay, I will stop now. But thank you for your time, and I hope I've given you something to at least think about.
Thank you very much.
Of course, we look at Section 760.27, Florida statutes, deals with emotional support animals and, and the service animals. But that's up to the council if you want me to change this.
What statute is that, Jeff?
767, 760.27.
If you don't mind, could you point out the page number that you're talking about?
This is page 4 of 17 of the ordinance and page 384 of the document. That's the definition I took straight out of that statute.
So my, my thought on it is, and, and maybe that's just because I am a very big, much of a dog lover. I would never bring my dogs to a restaurant, let them lick off the plate, because they don't eat even food anyway. But we're asking people to come in and visit Avon Park. We're, we're asking them, they could be riding through from South Florida to North Florida. Hey, stop in and visit one of our restaurants. It's, it's not, we don't have very many outside establishments that they could go and eat outside with the dog. So are we going to discourage visitors from coming through because we're not going to allow their dogs in a crate? Or, I mean, and maybe that's another option is allow them, if they come in the restaurant, they have to be at least crated, or, I don't know, remain on the floor at all times, you know, something to that effect. Now, I can tell you that I have been to Walmart, and I've seen people with dogs in their crates, in the, in the buggies, on a pad, on the buggy. But I've also seen kids who have crappy diapers, sitting right in the front, where my vegetables go. Just as, just as the same.
So is there some work that you think needs to be done on this? Or is there tweaks that need to be made, or?
Or can we just pass this and work on that? And tell me what you want to see. Because I know that they're looking for something to work with right now.
Sure.
Because we can't, right now, we can't take anything to the special magistrate at all.
Just looking for a determination if you want to pass this tonight, and, or if we want to keep working on it before we pass it.
I think we need to keep working on it, honestly. I just, some of the wording in there, I just, I just can't agree with.
All right, we got one. Is there anyone else?
Don't matter.
I mean, it's only a couple of weeks, we can continue to work on it.
December 8?
Sure.
All right, is anyone opposed to tabling it until December 8?
No.
October 8.
Okay, so do we have a motion to postpone?
I'll make a motion to postpone ordinance 30-2025 indefinitely.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just please, any suggestions that you have, please send them in to Jerry. Jerry, are you going to handle that?
Sure.
Okay, just please send them to Jerry so we can get to work on it and make it concise. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number 28, we have a proposal for professional civil engineering services for State Road 64 Turn Lane and Access Improvement Project. I don't see a name here. Any idea who's taking this?
It's me, thank you. So you may recall that we received a grant from FDOT for about $3 million to improve access to the airport. This is a proposal to design for that grant that we received. It's up to three turning lanes, intersection improvements, and then a new paved road that's interior to the airport to allow further development out there. The proposal's $719,920 from Kimblehorn.
Okay, do we have any questions?
This turning lane, wasn't that already included in our tenure plan, regardless of the FamCabo involvement?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve item number 28?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for professional civil engineering services.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions.
Should this thing with the airport go sideways, are we going to be on the hook? This is, this is an FDOT grant, right? So we won't be obligated to do any kind of paybacks or anything?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number 29, we have the interim city manager appointment discussion. Ms. Kelly?
This is just a placeholder for you all to discuss how you want to move forward with an interim.
Okay, at our last meeting, we could not agree on an interim. Obviously, it would be better if we had one. There was a discussion about inside versus outside. Obviously, my stance is outside is better. Just so we don't put any targets on anybody's back for the inside. We also need the staff to do their jobs as is, so any suggestions?
I, I have a similar comment on that. I've talked to some employees, and I thought about this. One, if we, you know, I don't think you want to go down the road where we had different city council members recommend, you know, somebody to be the interim, and then somebody else recommends somebody else. And then we have the option, like you said, of having the inside employees do it. It then takes them away from their job. And I think right now we need staff to be at the job, especially since we have quite a few brand new employees, even department heads. And so I think the, the most neutral, fairest way for us to do it is either way, we're going to, we're going to have to pay somebody to do this job. Somebody's going to have to be compensated to be the interim. So in order to escape any interference or difference of agreements or opinions from everybody, I suggest strongly that we just go ahead and hire independent retired city manager for interim for one or two months, whatever it takes for us to find a new one this way. There's no favoritism or situations that somebody can like or dislike. If you want to, I'll make, I'll make that motion if somebody wants a second to discuss it any further.
Okay, so are you making that motion?
Yes.
All right, so I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Well, before I, again, there we go. So this is my idea, I'd just like to promote this. We don't hire from the outside, because by the time we find a person from the outside, get them in, get them tested, that would also be a cost. We get them vetted, because we will have to do that for an interim, correct?
Depends on if you go with a placement service, they do all that for you. But again, you're going to pay. And you heard the proposal was, I think, $15,000 a month.
Yes.
Yeah, that was a suggestion by Mr. Flowers, so he already knew what was going on.
And so by the time they get brought up to speed, we're going to, we're going to have a city manager hired by then, by that time.
Hopefully.
So I have, I have an idea if we have all four of the key directors of each department work as a team, or basically a committee to pull 25% of the city manager's position. I mean, they, they would do, like Randy, I would suggest Randy would do it. He works, he's worked closely with Dr. Kelly on day-to-day operations. He's left, been left in charge on many occasions. Melody, but I think Melody's going out on leave for a little bit, so maybe Daniel Phillips could. She knows the financial part of the operation. She's also worked closely with Dr. Kelly. Denise would work with the employees. That would be the HR part of the equation. Tommy King, he would work with the public work sanitation aspect, and he also has experience as an interim city manager. I feel like this would alleviate any kind of jealousy that we would, if we, you know, decided to bring up one person, but one person thought, well, they probably weren't as experienced as I am. I don't know why she got it or he got it. If there's one person that's going to be the lead or executor, have them decide among themselves which one would take that role. If they're unable to decide, then they would come back to the council, and we would decide. And I trust between four grown professional adults that they would be able to make that decision.
You would think.
They'd be required to meet once a week, either on a Monday or Friday, to bring the others up to speed on their part. They'd also, all four of them will be present at the council meetings and would keep us up to speed on things that occurred within their departments in between meetings. As far as the pay, the pay would be split between the four of them. So basically, it wouldn't be one person doing their job and the city manager's job all at once. It would be all four of them dealing with their department. And all, at the end, they would all bring each other up to speed as to what happened in their own department.
Um, Shelley, I, I like that ideal. The only problem I have with it is, I, I tell you all the time, employees, employees mean a lot to me. I was once an employee. I wish I had somebody that have my back, like I have, city of Avon Park back, okay? Employees is important to me. They're very important. Without them, even though they may be on the load of the totem pole, they are important. Whoever you get, if it's these four, I wish that you got the best manager there is to manage the employees and not just give anybody to the employees. Get the best manager, have people skill, know how to work with employees, know how to talk to employees for these next two, three, four months. Don't just get, get a manager because they have the administrative skill. Make sure you get a manager that know how to work with employees. And I'm not saying that the other managers' positions and titles that you give them, their position is not important, because wastewater and sanitation, we need to know that he know what he's doing out there. We cannot afford, Shelley, you probably remember when Mark was here, and we was just coming out of COVID or going through COVID, and we were so low down on employees. He sent us out in the streets and told us to find somebody. I'm not sure if any other city councils went out and found employees, but I walked the streets to find employees, okay? Employees are not as easy to come by as people think they are. First of all, you, they got to be vetted, they, they got to have this, they got to have that, they got to have a little bit of skills. I just think it's important in these next two to three to four months, however long it takes, that whatever manager, I think your, I think your plan is great. Then opposed to hiring somebody for $15,000 a month. I think we got enough or, or, or qualified managers to hold a fort down until we can get a permanent city manager. I, I, that's just my belief. I just wish that whoever we decide, be careful what manager you put with the employee, because at this point, we cannot afford to lose any employees.
Well, the managers that I have here are already supervisors over their employees.
And supervising over a certain employee in your department, and then you supervising, you the manager over the whole city, city department now.
But see, that's what it would be, is the department head would be the one over their department. They would all be over their own department. And, and also, there would not be hiring or firing during that time unless it was like a blatant cause to hire or fire.
I like that.
Well, that's the million dollar question, is what's going to be considered blatant and who determines it, you know?
Well, like, I could throw out some examples, and I'm not trying to point any fingers at anybody, so please, nobody's taken it this way. But they come to work intoxicated, they come to work driving our trucks intoxicated, you know, blatant things like that. driving our trucks intoxicated, um, you know, blatant things like that. But I feel like that's something that we can all work on, that would be blatant, um, reason for termination.
Or blatant and disrespectful to one of the managers. I, I mean, it, it has to be excessive, I mean.
And, and they would already know that because they're already the supervisor.
Jerry, do you ever come?
Uh, just to make sure that they appoint one person as the interim, that you appoint one person as the interim city manager, the others can assist. But otherwise, you'll be in conflict with your charter.
And I, I just have one follow-up comment to, uh, my motion was that, um, uh, first of all, the public works director, as everybody knows, is brand new for our last, uh, meeting we had. So I don't think we need to put him on anything else other than to learn in his department and get in it, uh, up to speed per his, his requests or his needs. Uh, the second one is Danielle is not a supervisor of any people or department heads, but she also was one of the employees at one time where we did split this up. And after that happened, there were several employees that complained that those four people got the city manager's pay split between them, which is, I believe, $130,000 now. So you would divide that amongst those four people and then everybody below them would be doing some of their work and they would not get an increase in pay for talent more work. So you're gonna have, you might have problems with employees not happy with those four choices. And that's why I was trying to get away from doing that because I think that you're, might have a problem with some people not liking those choices. And, and I think that, I think you could go out and hire an independent person and probably get them here within a week or two because that's what their, their job is. They're independent, they're retired, they know what city manager position. Yes, it's $15,000 for maybe two months. I mean, compared to splitting the city manager's pay between four people, there isn't really much difference, but it's also neutral, you're not basically rewarding or taking work away from adding work to any other person. That's why I was trying to make that suggestion, but that's my idea, but thank you.
So when, when you say, because if we go out with a firm, we don't know they're gonna be a retired city manager, but you're talking about going to a firm, like a temp agency.
There, there are firms that are, had that, I gave that name to Denise last time, I believe, I don't know, but that was the, uh, company that she came up with the $15,000 because I heard there were some companies that do that where they come out for a little money, almost volunteer to do the job. So there may be other options that were not looked into, that maybe somebody predetermined they didn't want to go that direction and they went out to one company and said $15,000, so well, that's $30,000 in two months, but, uh, in the meantime, you're splitting $100,000 amongst four people, so they're getting a, a big Christmas bonus, which is, uh, what the problem is the last time they got it, and I have to admit, in my opinion, those last four people that did it, did a pretty good job. But they also had employees beneath them that complained what a big Christmas bonus they all got and they didn't get anything, but they had to do part of their work, so. That, yes, I'm a big employee person too, and I worry about people's feelings and, and thoughts behind it, so. I'm just trying to give you an idea that would make it neutral, that it would not harm anybody. And I think we could find somebody and quickly, within less than a month's time, to come in and sit and do that at a, at a reasonable rate, so that's my thought.
So how long, I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor, go ahead.
But, but, but Jim, who said that we gonna split $130,000 amongst four employees? Who said that? The council gets to decide what we want to offer them.
No. No?
No, we have, um, an administrative stipend policy. That's in our personnel rules and regulations, if you're working out of class, uh, especially in this type of situation, the stipend would be the dollar amount that that position would make, and it's not the highest amount, it's what it's advertised at, so you could pick anything between 100 and $130,000, so that's $8,300 a month to $10,008 a month, and it would go to whoever's in that position or split between those employees.
So the minimum was 83?
83, 33 a month.
For each person?
No, to split.
Oh, to split, okay.
Each person.
I, yeah, uh, it's Monday.
Well, we had a good suggestion last time, Mr. Flowers done the job before. Would have been very unabrasive, hey?
Well, um, Mayor, once we found out that, you know, we, I didn't know. I'm glad, I'm glad Ms. Southern brought it to our attention. Once we found out that Mr. Flowers were possibly, um,
It's completely made up, by the way.
That was made up?
Yeah, 100%.
Okay, well, you know, that's, that's your word, that's her word.
Okay.
But, and guess what, Mayor? Uh, I, I've heard from other community leaders that it was true. So why, why would, we, we already got a mess going on in Avon Park right now. And I'm not just talking about city council, I'm talking about all over. So why would we want to bring more mess into it?
It would have been a fantastic option, he would have did a great job.
Not if it's a mess.
It wouldn't be a mess, you don't make it a mess. All right, so we've got a few options there, we can do a collaboration of people, generally speaking, uh, the three, two or three times that we've tried that in the past, they weren't very happy. Um, either way, we want to try to limit the amount of time that we have this situation, no matter what. I've heard from the council that they wanted to take their time, is that still the case? That you want to take a good amount of time to select the actual city manager? Is that still the case?
I don't know, $15,000 a month, do we want to take our time now?
Well, regardless of the pay, I'm saying, do you want the process to take a while or do you want to try to get it done within a month?
If it can be done within a month, we can do it.
I think so too.
Can I suggest one, the initial alternative, it's some, the Florida League of Cities has called range riders, are generally, um, be, um, city managers retired. They assist cities in, uh, making decisions with regard to how to hire city managers.
That was the one, that was the one I recommended, by the way.
That they might even have a list of people that are open for interim city manager positions and you can ask them if they, uh, if they want to make some recommendations. I, I know they won't tell you, they won't give you a name, they, they may give you a list of names of people that have recently retired or right retired, but still don't mind to work a few months for Christmas money or whatever. And, um, that they might provide you some good, good names of people that have been city managers for decent sized cities, for that matter.
So we have Denise online, she's, she did speak to that. Florida League of Cities, I believe.
I'm sorry, what?
I believe Denise spoke to the Florida League of Cities, we're trying to unmute her right now.
I know somebody here spoke to him because, because I, we're hiring somebody in one of my other cities and he spoke to me afterwards and said, I'll be seeing you over at Avon Park, so. Somebody talked to him. But I, I think that in addition to the fact that they assist in hiring city managers and give you advice in that area, they might also have a list of interim possibilities, just throwing that out there.
I think the big issue that we're up to tonight is that we don't have another meeting, uh, before we will be without a city manager. So if we had plenty of time, that would be different, but we essentially need to make a decision tonight. Is Denise there? Okay. So as I said before, you know, somebody that already has experience with Avon Park would be better. I don't think this council's gonna go for Mr. Schrader, so I won't bring that up.
We do have a motion on for him.
Okay.
I can wait.
Okay, is there anything else to add to the motion? It's been a motion to be made for the, what was it, the rough riders, you called it?
Range riders, yeah.
Range riders?
Florida League of Cities.
Okay.
Is that the motion?
I'll add that too.
Was that your motion?
Sure.
Let's make sure we specify which one it is.
I'm gonna try to.
Range riders, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's what they call the range riders, that they, they're basically retired, it's a group of retired city managers working under the guise of Florida League of Cities that, that go out and advise cities when they're hiring city managers.
Denise, you talked to a company, uh, that gave you a quote for an interim city manager, could you specify which company that was or organization?
Georgia, um, and they are, that's all, all that they do is work with local governments. And, um, I also talked to the range riders and their, their specialty is working with, uh, cities that are less than 10,000 population. We kind of are right on the cusp of that. Um, but they don't, they don't send you people to work there. Um, they assist you with your advertising, they assist you with the review process of the applications and they're, they're more geared towards helping smaller cities that don't have those mechanisms in place.
Do you think they might have a list of, of people they, they could suggest as, uh, for possible interim city managers?
Yeah, they said that they, they have between five and 15 throughout the state of Florida uh, that are what they call transitioning city managers. Um, we did through, uh, through the, not the ICMA, but I think it's the FMMA, I think is what it is. Um, they publish a list of those transitioning, uh, employees that are city managers and we emailed each of them uh, a letter saying that we're looking for a city manager to see if any were interested already.
So you already emailed the individuals on the list?
Yes.
And have you gotten any responses?
Um, we, we have a total of four applications that came in that, uh, meet pretty much all the criteria that we're looking for. Um, there were a few others that I'm still waiting on documentation on. Um, I think a total of nine a, uh, applications have come in as of Friday. Uh, but four were complete and I'm still waking, waiting on other information to come in.
Did you talk to them about the possibility of, of being an interim city manager? And then also, you know, applying for the city manager's position? In case the city council wants to take longer?
Yeah, we definitely talked about both, um, especially with the agency that wanted to charge 15. Um, if we have an interim through, through them, uh, we're not on the hook. Uh, when we're done with that person, we can discontinue at any time without any penalty. Um, or if the, the interim is a great person, then you want to move forward with bringing them on as city manager. Um, you can also do that without any extra penalty, but if they go out and actually look for a city manager for us, um, then there's a flat fee that they charge, um, it's quite costly and you pay a third upfront, a third when they place the person and a third after they're, they're done.
So you're talking about selecting an interim from the list of applicants that have already put their applications in?
Uh, no, that's, that's those, the applications that are coming in are straight for the city manager role. We did not advertise for an interim city manager.
I understand that, but you said that you, you spoke to some about both positions, I'm not, I, I guess I'm unclear.
Mayor, that, that was the agency that I spoke with that would do the placement.
Well, I was just referring to, sometimes people that apply would be willing to serve as interim city manager in hopes that they get selected as, for the permanent job, but, you know, you don't commit to that. And perhaps if we got review of those, uh, existing applications, then the city, city, um, council could move, meet again, get a special meeting to decide on offering a interim job to somebody in the meantime, just throwing that out there.
Okay, is, uh, anyone in favor of doing that?
I am. I mean, we, we're gonna probably select one of them anyway, so why not look at the applications now and see if we can find a interim out of one of them. We may like what, we may like the interim that we choose and decide we want to keep them as permanent. I, I, I think, I, they've shown interest.
That, that'd be a more comfortable fit with your charter, just my suggestion.
What is this side of the dais thing?
When, when is the cutoff for the, um, the applications to be in?
30 days, huh?
It was 30 days, it was right at the end of November, like, or, the, end of November or December 1st, somewhere in there.
November 30th.
November 30th.
I mean, there may be some that can't do it because they can't locate right away, but we may get a couple of that can.
Chris Downey, 109 East Main Street, out of the four candidates that you had, is there viability there? And has she looked into the other five that could be viable?
Did you hear that question, Denise?
I, I did not, I'm sorry.
Denise, this is Chris Downey, um, out of the four that you said you went through, are they now still viable and is there any of the other five that could be viable for interim?
Uh, the other five, um, I think from memory, and I'm not, I apologize, I'm not at the office today. But, um, I think there were like three that probably wouldn't even meet the criteria and there were two that we were still waiting on the documentation on that could potentially meet the criteria.
So you sent out a list of?
Provided, uh, definitely met the criteria.
The list that you provided, the four, they, they met the criteria, you're saying?
Yes, mhm.
Okay. So we got an email last week, I think it was, uh, with four applicants in it. Has anybody had a chance to review those? Okay.
I have.
Okay.
I do too.
Well, we do have one of those people here, do you have any questions?
I'd rather wait to get some more applicants in.
Okay. So do we want to, it sounds like there's a, at least an openness to picking someone from that group as an interim? Jim, is that something that you would be open to as well? I know you had made a motion.
I'd be fine with that too.
Okay. So it seems clear that the motion that you've been made, uh, is not gonna be the course of action that is gonna be taken?
If you want, we can vote, I'll vote no on that if you like.
Okay, is there any other questions on that motion?
What was the motion again?
The motion was to go with the outside agency. However, the discussion that we're talking about is potentially picking one of the applicants.
Jerry, are you sure that we'd have to, just asking for my own benefit, are you sure that we'd have to vote no on it or can't he just withdraw his?
Uh, well, depends on whether you want to follow rules of order or not. Once, once the motion's made and seconded, it's the property of, of the board, so he can't withdraw it. Uh, but you can vote it down.
That's what happened last time.
All right.
Sure. All right, so we had a motion and a second, let's go ahead and call the rule.
No.
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 I tried.
All right, so we did have the four applicants, uh, with that. I would like to go ahead and pick, uh, Jason Atkinson, uh, if he's willing to serve as our interim city manager.
And I would like to disagree with you.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I made a motion, have a second, all right, go ahead.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think Jason would be a good city manager for the city of Avon Park. Um, I think when Jason first got here, Jason had his department in a turmoil. I know that for a fact because I probably received 10 to 17 to 20 complaints about it. I couldn't do anything about it because I thought that, uh, he had Mark in his pocket. And it was a mess. And I don't know if any other city council members received the complaints um, um, about Jason, but he had his department in a turmoil. And I didn't know what to do with it, and I know I can't give city employees any directions and I waited and I prayed, and I prayed for somebody. And when Dr. Kelly came, I talked to Dr. Kelly about the complaints that I was receiving from Jason in regards to Avon Park, um, employees. And, um, she pretty much told me she would have to talk to them herself. And I don't think, I didn't think Jason, now, don't get me wrong, in, in his public direct, uh, director's position, I think he was very knowledgeable, he knew what he was talking about. I even at most time thought that he was leading the city in most of the time in a direction that they needed to go. But when it comes to the city manager and supervisons employees, I think, I just don't think that Jason meet that. Another thing Jason did, Jason would written up by the city, by the city manager. And I think Jason knew that we needed him. I think Jason, um, resigned. I don't know for a fact, but I'm on the outside looking in, he didn't like the write-up, he didn't like that it appeared in the paper. And Jason has done stuff for the city that most people would have got fired for. But we had a good city manager who had a head on her shoulder, who knew we needed Jason. And Jason knew we needed him. And far as I'm concerned, Jason left us because As far as I'm concerned, Jason left us because he got that write-up. And it appeared in the paper. And to tell you the truth, I'm not even sure why he even put his application in. Jason was called stealing. I, I, I call it stealing, but what it was, was. He was using the suit, the city's resource for his personal use and, 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 and his neighbors. Okay, Jason went up there to the, I'm not sure what the proper name is, it's called in the city. The, the, the Mexican grocery store. And he's inside of that plaza designing. Flower beds at the city expense, okay? Jason has done things that he should have got fired for. Okay? Now we gonna talk about bringing him back as an interim as a city manager? No, why would we? Because anybody else would have got fired from it.
It's your opinion.
Exactly. And I'm entitled. So why would we bring something back that has, you know, caused chaos? Jason caused chaos, that's my opinion. He caused chaos when he got here. And that's my opinion.
I completely disagree with all that. I think that Jason did a fantastic job.
Part.
With all of it, really.
So he didn't do what I said he did. I wrote up for.
No, I don't believe he did. I think that he went above and beyond for the city. I think that, uh, he was pushing us in the right direction.
What his.
Okay, you had time to make your.
Said that he did, then Dr. Kelly is a liar. Because she's, she's the one that, that wrote it up. Or she approved the write-up.
Are you done?
Go ahead.
I think Jason did a fantastic job for the city. Um, I think that he would do a fantastic job for the city going forward. The biggest thing, as I've said this entire time, is that we need somebody. Who knows what's going on, who knows what we need right now, not what we're gonna need in, in, you know, six months from now to train. That's why I suggested David Flowers before. Now, obviously that didn't go over very well, but. There's a very short list of people that actually have any experience, uh, at a high level with Avon Park that want to step into this role. Um, he's been gracious enough, um, to mention that he's interested in it and I think that he would be a great candidate for it. The interim does give you a, a period of time, uh, you know, to vet this person and, and see how things go. There was mentioned that the process needed to be drug out longer, um, that things were being rushed. Um, this would definitely give us that option and that flexibility. Um, I could be mistaken, but when I spoke to Dr. Kelly, she seemed that that would not be a terrible option. So she can correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, I think that he comes highly recommended by a lot of people, um, that he's worked with and worked for. And I think he'd be a fantastic choice for our interim.
And not only that, Mayor, Jason brings, uh, baggage from where he come from. Everybody knows that.
In your, in your opinion.
Everybody knows that.
While the speaker's coming up, um, I mean, I've appreciated that he doesn't even work here anymore and he's still been coming to the meetings and he's still provided input. And he's still, you know, we've asked him, you guys have asked him a bunch of questions during meetings and stuff like that, and he's always been willing to help. So I know I definitely appreciate that.
Uh, Brittany, I haven't asked Jason anything because I think Jason should let the city of Avon Park go. And stay out of our employees' ear. That's what I think.
We get it. Tom.
Tom Macklin, six zero nine County Road sixty-four east here in Avon Park. Uh, I concur with what Mr. Bure has said, uh, in as much as the charter speaks specifically to. Not only. That you need an interim city manager when the position becomes vacant. But frankly, the charter also outlines the continuity of office. And the procedure as laid out in your charter is essentially that the city manager shall. Not if, may, whatever. Designate someone as the assistant city manager. Where in such time, when the position may become vacant, that that person would then fill the role. Of the city manager. Um, I, rather than having this discussion. Who to name, I mean, let's just say for the sake of conversation that at your previous meeting. Mr. Flowers had been named. You can't have two city managers at, at the same time. Essentially, you would have had to remove, if I understand procedure. In order to fill the position, it first has to be vacant. You would have had to accepted Dr. Kelly's resignation effectively immediately and her vacate the office and not even fulfill her four weeks. And then the interim city manager would have taken that spot. I mean, but I think you need to go back and look at this continuity of office portion of the powers of the city manager. It designates how this is supposed to work. And it's not going down the list and trying to figure out, although I understand the range riders. And that may be an option at the time that the position becomes vacant. And the person that Dr. Kelly has designated as the interim city manager by. The fact that they've been the assistant city manager as per this. Um, so I, I think you're maybe getting over, over your feet a little bit in trying to select somebody. Uh, based upon the, the way the charter reads to me. Now, I would. You know, I would refer to Jerry, but that's the way I interpret it and I could be wrong.
Yeah, Tom, very, very close. Um, I'll read it to you. The city manager shall designate a city employee as an assistant city manager. To exercise the powers and, and perform the duties of the acting city manager during. Any temporary absence or disability of the city manager. Or such period between the time when the office of city manager becomes vacant. And when an interim city manager or city manager is appointed by the council. Such ma- manager designation shall be subject to the approval of the council. The ci- the council shall appoint a city manager or as an interim city manager within a reasonable time. Of the office of city manager becoming vacant. So whatever they, um, the city manager, whoever they appoint, it still has to be approved by the council. And, uh. Sounds like we, that would be a difficult thing right now, the way things are. But that's the continuity of office in your charter.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
Oh, yeah. If the city manager should appoint, then why don't we let the, uh, city manager appoint somebody and then let us vote whether we agree or not?
You could do that if you wish.
I mean, is that what it not says, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay, then why are we voting?
Well, I, I think with the presumption is under this particular provision is they would do that while they're still city manager and. And operating along and then that person would be trained and have some background and then at, at some point. You know, but, but it doesn't mean that she can't do it right now.
So you're saying it doesn't mean that she can't do it?
That's just what I said.
And she has the authority to do it, per, uh.
Well, the, the authority doesn't matter because it still has to be approved by the council.
It has to be approved by the.
But she can make an appointment, but it's really more of a recommendation based on the charter.
Yes. Love to hear what she have to say.
I can tell you that everybody I've talked to, they don't want to touch it with a ten-foot pole.
So you have no recommendation?
I, I do not.
But you can see the difficulty with three-two commission. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's sticking your heads in the li- in the lion's mouth.
All right.
Let me just ask this. I know that, um, during budget time, it was commented that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I hate, hate to call him out, but Jason had got us, uh, two, lost two grants or made the city pay two grants. Um, what was the amount of that, that he messed up the grants and made the city have to pay out? One was eighty thousand dollars?
I think one was seventy-five thousand and I think the other one was in the magnitude of thirty thousand. I can't remember exactly.
And that was after he left, though. Yeah, it was after he left.
One of them was not after he left. He authorized the work to proceed without F dot approval. And it was discovered. Once he was gone, that that was the case when we tried to submit for reimbursement. And they said they sent him multiple letters saying you have to submit this information to get approval to proceed.
Jason, do you have any comment to that? Name and address for the record, please.
Jason Atkinson, five oh seven Tulane Circle, uh, to that. Um, when I first got here, there were three, kind of three grants floating around. One of the grants, we were kind of back and forth, we were having to do bi-weekly meetings. At that time, um, one of the, the projects, I believe it was, I want to say Fred Connor. Or one of them, I'm trying to remember now. Um, but. Uh, it kind of went past where it was, where it was supposed to be and there was a, um. I think like fifteen thousand into being billed by the engineering firm. It was caught. And then at that time, uh, a statement was made by me about what we do about it. I'm not going to get into anything about putting anyone here under the bus, so I'm not going to do that. But what I, so at that time, where this was brought forth and was spoke about. The, the last one, the second, uh, grant that you were speaking about, the grant was here, it's in your dock, it's in your packet. I know what was said happened, but it was in your packet and it was approved and it was, and it was still there. I, I left afterwards to go work for another city. So it was there and it just had to go through. So it's like you've said, if someone's. Would, um, you know, you leave your position, the next person has to pick that up. I did not sign the, the work order for, um. I think it's excavation point to go out there and perform that work. I didn't do that, so. Um, it was approved here. There were multiple steps because it had to keep coming back and forth. But no, I did not, I did not do that. So, uh, it passed here, it had to get sent back over, over to DOT. Prior to the, the, you know, the authorization to, to tell EPI they were good to go. So that's where that was.
But that was after you left?
That was after I left. The first one was like ten thousand in, we caught it, we tried to see what we can do about it. And then I kind of brought it up because I didn't even want to pay the invoices. And, um, because I knew we may face that, that issue. So, but I'm not gonna go, go into any further specifics about that, because I'm not gonna do that to anybody.
Got it.
And just regarding the other stuff, I, I, you know, I, if. However may work out after work with five and, but I disagree with everything that took place and I, I. I'd be more than willing, if anyone understands, when you try to, when you get accused of something and then people just run with it. It's a really bad thing. You come up to me, you approach me, ask me what's what. I'll take you right, I'll take you right through the decision-making process and I'll explain everything there. There are things said that is not accurate. I feel really bad that you even think that about me. Um, and. I, that's, that's not the case. I, I. The reason I stayed here, the reason why I didn't move to where my new employer was, because I never knew how this would play out. But I do lo- I do love this city. I see where the city has to go. I hear everyone talking about. That this city's going in the wrong direction and that, you know, who wants this job, who would take this job? I say this within a year that I, I've, that I was here, uh, more than a year. The projects, the friendships, the, the, the staff, the personnel, as many good things as was happening. I really cherish, I still have those friendships to this day. Um, you know, I feel bad that. You, what I've noticed with the town is that people will say things and other people will take it and run with it. And that's, that's not fair. When you can just come up, anyone could come up and ask me. Jason, what was your decision tree? Why, why did you do that? And I'll sit down and explain to them. I, I'll go walk everyone through and say, what would you have done different? Now, some of the things were brought up, hey, maybe you should have done this or maybe done that. But like you said, I do, I did it with the best intent of the city. There's other things that are, that went into that decision tree that were never brought up. So, um. I respect the city, I don't, I'm not going to say anything bad about, the decision was made. Um. I took it and you're correct. We're, you're, you're correct with the statement you said. You, I think you, you said that you thought that I left. Soon as that happened. I told the city manager I would be looking for a job right after that, due to the way things took place. And, and just, sure, go ahead. No, I did not. I had a, I either signed it or I was fired. I, I disagreed with it and at the time. And I, I, I disagree with it, plain and simple. I, I completely disagree with it. I think there's many false accusations there, it's all over the place. It doesn't. The, you, the, the next person in line that was there completely agree with everything that I did. I, I think there's plenty of things that. If you're told the story, you may believe it, be like, wow, that, that, that took place? I can't believe that happened. But that's not what took place. And many people actually know what took place. Like, I don't even know where you came up with that. I designed plants and the, I never did that. I don't even know where that came from. But, um, what took place was not that. It wasn't, it was all about trying to fix, which two people sent me letters. And, and, or email, or not email, but text message. And thank you, and one was an email saying thank you for, for fixing something that I've been having, uh, uh, you know, experienced this problem. You got involved, it got fixed. And that's all it was. There's no difference and, and, and it came about. Oh, this person that buy you, or they did this, or they worked over here. No, 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 that's not, that's not what happened. That, that's not what happened with me. Sure.
So. Always came to me and told me that you would make him work on residence property illegally. Because everybody knows from the meter to the road, it belongs to the city. And anything from the meter back is below for the city. They told you that, that they don't feel comfortable doing. You told one, maybe two, that if they didn't do it, that you would fire them.
Oh, no, they. Can I, can I answer that? Can I answer that? Okay. That never happened. That never happened. I would never send an employee to do something. When this came about, when I first heard about it, was through, uh, uh, a, um. An investigator saying that it was investigating me, started asking me questions. That's when I first heard about it. And, and I, and I had no idea what they were even investigating. I had no clue. No clue what they were investigating. So, I, I. So, you, go on. Uh, no, it, it didn't, it didn't. I mean, and, and I, 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 I'll tell you, I, I, I'll go ahead and I'll tell you. For, for domestic water line, when there's a domestic water line going into a property, okay? If, if it, if it, it has a certain hazard, right, that, that domestic water line. If they had, it poses a hazard, you have to have a backflow preventer. Are we all kind of aware of what the backflow preventer? It protects potable, non-potable water, right? It's determined that irrigation is potable, not, non-potable water. So in that instance, what ended up happening was. The, that person was complaining about water pressure, have water pressure issues. And sent it in to the, the Public Works Department. And this is all my knowledge, right? So send it into the Public Works Department. Other way, he asked that, that that individual go out whenever they came out to come talk to them because there may be an issue, right? So, I, our department went out there and looked. Check, check whatever they checked and then turn around and came back and stated. Uh, no, it's all good, but nobody talked to that individual. So he was upset. So one day, it's, it was, uh, lunchtime, I'm walking out after lunch and there's someone walking up to my step. And, and this guy lives two houses from me. I don't talk to him much, but he's out, there's two houses from me. And he said, yeah, I don't know what else to do. I got an issue, I get, uh, like I have water pressure and then it just decreases. And then I said, this is, this in the water pressure, it's likely a flow, a valve, a valve is closed or there's some kind of issue there, right? Okay, no problem. So I went ahead and I, 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 uh, I said, so what's, what's the issue? So, so I walked over there and he shows me, he says, you see when he, when he turns a hose and he turns something else on? And I say, yeah, you got flow restriction somewhere, I don't know where it's coming from. So I said, so what, so what happened? And he said, no, I reached out and he told me about reaching out. And I said, well, that's not the kind of customer service I want to give to our residents. So no problem. So I reached, I called in, I called, uh, I called, uh, the. Utility manager Joseph Sliva. I talked to him. I said, Mr. Sliva, I said, this guy's got an issue, it's likely a flow restriction, I don't know where it is. So he goes and he does whatever he does. The next day. Uh, I go ahead, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna relieve him for lunch and I see a truck that pull out, city truck, and the city truck's out there and the guy's looking at it. So he goes over, like, he's talking, the, 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 the people are talking there, they look at the ground and they say. They're like, what, how, how do we go about doing this? The water meter's connected, the whole issue, uh, you know, like, you have to dig up the ground in order to get to it. You can't, in order to take that off, it's like to take the water meter off and then turn it on. And then you're gonna have a water meter box filled with mud. So he's just saying, what do you think we should do? I'm pretty good at diagnosing issues. I'm pretty good at diagnosing issues. So I looked down, the backflow preventer has a city of Avon Park backflow preventer tag. That means it was inspected by the city of Avon Park. When, how long ago? That was almost like two thousand thirteen, fourteen. I, I can't remember what it was. So he said, the city of Avon Park said that I have to have that, that backflow on there. And I looked around and I said, the whole block, there's no one around here that has a backflow preventer on their domestic water line to their house. Nobody has that. Now, if you had it and it went, like, we talked about this with Crystal Lake, if it was going and feeding an irrigation system, then you would have to have it. So I said, do you have another water meter around here? No, I don't. So this is just going to your house. I said, what's your irrigation hooked up to? It's hooked up to the pump. Are they interconnected? No, they're not interconnected at all. So a guy says, what, what's, so, so what do you think we should do? I said, well, if you don't want the backflow preventer, I said, cut that pipe just at the base, cut the pipe, turn it to the side, turn on the, 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 uh, ball valve. And as soon as he turned it on, the water started shooting. When it started, water started shooting and the flow didn't go away. I said, that's your issue. And, and then because I was telling him, and he was telling me that the line that went, it was, it caused an issue to the other neighbor's house. So, so I was thinking, I said, well, if, if we didn't do this, then the issue would have been to the line coming off the main, they might have brought it off and then teed it off and then brought it down. Usually you, you come off maybe uh, inch and a half line, then you split it to like two, one inch or two, three quarters. That's, that's another way people do things. So as soon as they cut, so, so, so just let me finish. So once, so, so I just want to say, so once they cut it and the water came out, I said, so what do I do? I said, I said, that's, you saying we put that? Yeah, you put that, then, then we can have the backflow preventer? Yeah, you can have it. Okay, just put the pipe back together, glue, glue the sticks back together and that's it, we're done. And without them having to dig up and look for anything, and that was it. And that's, it was like that. That, that's, that's, there was no.
My question to Dr. Kelly, Dr. Kelly, was there an investigation done in reference to this infraction?
Yes.
And, and, and who conducted the investigation, Dr. Kelly?
Randy LaBelle.
And he found that, um, that he violated city procedures and policies?
He provided the information, we provided that to our employment labor attorney, who then made that determination of what was violated in the city.
And, and so Jason, if you didn't like the write-up because you thought you was right and you felt like you wasn't being treated fairly, why didn't you resign at that time? Why did you wait later to resign?
Because I live in a house and the house is mine. Working here in Avon Park, I'll say it. I don't, I don't, I, I took a significant pay cut when I came here.
That the city needed you at the time that you resigned?
I, I don't believe that. I, I don't look at the city.
Dr. Kelly. Did Kelly ask you to stay?
Bernice, calm down.
I'm sorry, did Dr. Kelly ask you to stay?
No.
She never asked you to stay?
No.
Okay.
No. It, it came in, it exactly how we talked about it. I got it. I, I made my, my statement. But I understood what she was coming from. She showed me a piece of paper when it went from what, what ended up happening. And she asked me if it was my writing and I said, no, that's not my writing. I don't know what that led, I never even, I've never even went back and looked in my packet. But what I will say is that I did take a rebuttal and I said, I want anyone who goes and looks at this. And I put a rebuttal, a PowerPoint in my, in my file and I said, please look at this. And at some time, some way, I want, I want you all, and end up being today, which this isn't where I wanted to put, put this, but I mean, the fact that the article was written, nobody reached out to me. Nobody, nobody did that. It, it, it's, I, I, you know, I just say slander, but I felt so bad about it that anywhere I go now, if I go get a job, I have to go explain this. And I don't like to explain because I, I personally, I didn't do anything to say, oh, I made money off of this. All I did was go and fix an issue, something that was super fast. And in the other issue, it's, it's, uh, it's, you know, I don't know if you want the other issue, but.
Randy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I did. Um, this is not directed towards Jason. This, I was, I wasn't, I, I just want to put it on the record that I wasn't like, ooh, 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 you know, let me, let me go ahead and investigate this. I, I did enough of these at the sheriff's office. I was, it was a little bit more than what I thought our new HR person, not what I thought, but what was thought of as our new HR person could deal with. There was a lot of people to, to talk to. All I did was, I'm a finder of facts in these investigations. I'm not, you'll see none of my conclusions. What do I think he did or didn't do? You won't see that in there. All I do is talk to people and what they say, I write down. I talked to Jason, what Jason told me, I put down. Well, I, I've talked to at least fifteen people probably in this case. Um, mostly public works employees. And I put down what a, a synopsis of what they told me, but, um, I had nothing to do with the decision that if any policy violations were.
So all, all your information was gathered?
Finder of facts.
Given to?
I was just, yeah, I talked to numerous people and wrote down what they said. That's it. Uh, so, um, I will say this, uh, before Jason got here. Am I a fan? Am I not a fan? It doesn't matter, you know? But I'm probably putting myself out here a little bit too much if he does get this position. But he had some baggage that came with him, whether it happened or not. He, I personally know for a fact that people reached out, they found articles on him, spread around public works before he even did his first day um, on the job here. I personally been involved in that same crap when I worked for the sheriff's office. So I do know how things perpetuate. It, it's up to people to figure out what's credible and what isn't. But I have no dogging, I don't, this has nothing to do with, oh, Randy wants to be part of the committee. No, I don't want part of the committee. I don't want anything to do with what's going on in here. But what I want to do is I want to advocate for the, the employees. Because yes, I'm a, a director, but kind of like at the sheriff's office, I was a deputy sheriff first. I got ranked as I, 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 I went up. But ultimately I always had a deputy sheriff badge. The same thing with here. I'm a city employee. All these people are city employees. They got used to Mark Schrader. He was a total different, he was an authoritarian type of leader. Then you got Dr. Kelly, who I told her to her face, she's more of a, what they consider a laissez-faire type of leader. So you got these employees trying to figure out, oh, I went from this to now this and she gives you autonomy and, you know, the, all the, the buzzwords that you want to say. And now I talk to people, I talk to a lot of people. All the employees around here are running scared. They don't know what to do. They heard the rumors, Jason's coming back, oh my God. You know, here we go, I'm going to be looking for jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, but then I also hear that, look, I don't care who they get in there. Let's just get some stability back to this because right now you get a, in another interim city manager that nobody knows of. And now we're trying to guess now what, now we got, we're going to deal with a micromanager, we're going to deal with what? And you got four directors who then you have managers underneath them and then you have foremen underneath them. And then you got the, the, the heart of the city and that's the workers. That's the workers, the ones you see out on Main Street cutting the grass and, and digging the holes and all that. And now they're hearing all these rumors of what's coming and, and who's got a personal agenda on city council and all that. And it's destroying the morale of this city.
Sure.
One hundred percent. You guys are looking for the best fit to lead the citizens. You need to look also, and you need to get out and talk to the people that work here. And you need to ask them, what are you looking for? Because right now they're running scared. This is the time of the year too. This is Christmas time coming too. And all that. And they're like, oh, well, someone, so, so and so gets back in, I'm going to get fired or I'm going to do this or just, I implore you to, to go to all the areas and talk to the, and I know some of you, I see you out a lot talking to people, but this has to, you know, this, he, it's, it's kind of unfortunate. He has to sit here and defend himself in front of it. This could have been, once it was brought out, maybe a one-on-one conversation instead of an open forum like this, but nonetheless, he put in for the position. So he's, he's a man, he's taking it. Um, he's not up here running, he didn't have to show up, so I'll give him respect for that, but something's got to happen soon because again, the timing of this year, we can all run our own departments. I'm not saying we don't need Jason or somebody like that. We can all run our own departments. But if you went the committee way, which whether you do or don't, it doesn't matter to me. You need one spokesperson that, that answers back to city council. You cannot have four people talking back to city council. It makes no sense.
Yeah, and, and it wouldn't, wouldn't meet the charter either.
Yeah. But, and, and one last thing, I, I, I personally witnessed with Chrissy, when you guys made her interim, I personally witnessed at least two different people, wouldn't even talk to her because they wanted the position. They, they, and it was disgusting. I mean, they wouldn't even talk to her. She couldn't even be an effective, she couldn't be an effective leader because nobody wanted to give her, because it was all, oh, it should have been me, that, you know, high school crap.
Sure.
But, um, just, I know you guys have the, the, the heart of the city. And I'll just end it at this, just please, for this position and the next one, make the right decision on behalf of the employees. I can't speak for the citizens.
On behalf of employees, my last thing, Jason, employees are complaining to me that you are grown men, you are talking to them like they are boys. And they're, they're, they're ready to fight you because they're grown men, they put on their pants just the way you put on yours every morning. And they come, come to the city and put in an eight hours job and they're not, they said they're not going to let you talk to them like they're little boys. Grown men crying because they want their job and they're afraid to go up against you. And I'm done.
Okay, I, I just respond to that real quick. I think I had one interaction with an employee that was where the employee felt a certain way. And, um, didn't quite know, but what was going on as far as our interaction. And it was an employee that stepped into a position. I tried to reaffirm and talk to him and let him know he's doing a good job. So he talked about the number of employees, I'm going to go fire, I'm going to, I, I'm not about that. I think if you all looked, I even stood up here and, 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 and cheered on Randy when the, the opportunity came for him per the director spot. I didn't need to come back. I had no idea what was going on with Dr. Kelly. I'm not, it, they even say what was, what was going on in the background? I, 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 what I did was I made job, like, tried to get jobs for people. I sent people to the trainings. I did plenty of things where what I would want done for me. I came up from the bottom as an employee. I started on the bottom. I didn't start at the top. So they say, oh, the people talk bad to me and everything. I'm aware, I'm well aware, every employee and I was told as I was going out the door, all the employees that were having conversations with council people, they were told me, they, they've told me. And, and that was one of the concerning reasons when I was hearing that, it's understandable, but that was one of the concerning reasons. And it, that made me wonder what's going on because that shouldn't be happening. I don't mind that employees have a chat, but it, when it's directly affecting the, the management of, I need you to, like, for instance, I, I, once a week, I need you to go and, and get the, get the, get the leaves off the, the curb, you know, downtown, we have to make it look good. It gets huge backlash over that. Or why do we need to do that? We can just blow it in the street and blow it. It's, it's, what's the means and methods is how things go, how we try to do things. But I've been right there with the employees. I didn't, I didn't belittle people if I said anything. I, you know, I told them, hey, you need to do, you, you, you need to do this. If you don't know how to do it, I'll show you. Or we can work with it, or we can plant plants, whatever may happen. My, my feeling with the employees is I've been hand in hand with the employees. There's plenty of employees that ride by, wave, hey Jay, when are you coming back? Everything else. No, I, I've been, I, I'm, I'm good with you. If I felt like I truly didn't get along with the employees here, I wouldn't be here. I don't need to, I don't need, I don't need this punishment. But I, I do like the employees. There's plenty of employees that do come up to me and, and, and tell me good things. And I, and I'm not talking about fifty fifty. This is much, this is much greater than that. Now, eh, you know, hearing that I, I did things to employees, I've been there, I've been their biggest champion. I always said, you have to compete, you got to compete. You know, if, when I, when I said something about, you know, getting them trucks or whatever, like the statement that you made, you recall when you told me outside and you said, oh, one of the reasons why is because employees are sitting in the trucks just idling. You recall that conversation? Well, and, and you said it over here, employees are sitting in the trucks. I don't want just employees sitting in the trucks. Remember that?
I, we, the, the, the conversation was about, I thought we was ordering too many vehicles. And I see a lot of employees sitting around, riding around in air conditions and they wasn't doing anything. But before we got those new vehicles, we didn't see them.
Right.
As soon as they was at work doing what they're supposed to do.
Exactly.
As soon as we got the new vehicles, that's all you see is vehicles riding up and down.
Good, good statement. So from there, then I took exactly what you do to fix because we had a conversation, we had good dialogue. So I went ahead and said, okay, we're going to get the GPS. We went to get the GPS units. So then we went ahead and said, this will, this will stop it. I'm not going to go fire an employee right off the bat, but I'll say, hey, listen, you're idling over here, you're going over here, whatever it may be. But it, that was the purpose of getting it. And then it came back. And then next thing you know, when it came here, you said, I don't want, I don't want to be looking after employees. So I was kind of confused because you said that you wanted, you didn't want people idling, sitting in trucks, which is exactly what GPS will tell you.
Jason, can I say, the reason, the reason for the GPS was I thought that you were particularly pointing out a particular department because who the supervisor was. That's why I said no to that. Now, if you had have came to this council and told this council that you wanted to get GPS for all these vehicles, oh, that makes sense to me. But when you went and narrowed down one department and everybody who knows your relationship with this one supervisor was very toxic, it made one believe that you was going after that, after that particular supervisor. Because see, I know you wanted to fire that particular supervisor and Christie took over and became the supervisor of that supervisor to keep you from firing them. Okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to talk.
Didn't what you think, I know.
No, I know you know. I, I'm not going to get into that with an employee and, and be, say anything about an employee.
It's still one side versus the other. We're not getting anywhere doing that. So is there some kind of a compromise? Like if we, if we put him in as the interim city manager, if we're considered or concerned about the employees, maybe the department head still be over the employees just on a temporary basis as far as like hiring and firing, where you got a little bit of the committee involved in some of it, but yet we've got our contact person, at least while he was in that interim mode. And then if he proves himself and he does a great job, then, and we decide at that time to give him the full-time city manager position, then that part could go away.
Gary, that would have to take effect, uh, uh, after the twenty first, correct? That would be part of the motion. We have to name somebody to be interim after the twenty first, because if we wait to next month, we're not going to have a city manager at the next meeting. So we have to appoint somebody, preferably now or a special meeting, to be interim effective the twenty second.
Yeah, sure. I, I just, I, I understand where you're coming from on that and, and, and it's a good suggestion, except that the charter states that the city manager would necessarily shall hire, suspend, demote and dismiss any city employee under the, the manager's jurisdiction in accordance with the law and personnel rules approved by the resolution of the council. It may authorize any department head to exercise these powers with respect to subordinates in that department.
So he could.
Simply you can direct him to do so, but he doesn't have to because that's the position that you'd be appointed to. But nevertheless, if, if you thought that was done unfairly, that doesn't mean that you couldn't then immediately fire him.
Right.
And rehire the employee or hire another city manager who could rehire that employee if it was done unfairly. I just threw that out as a possibility, but I, I think that would be unworkable to simply demand that he not fire somebody because it's contrary to the charter.
Well, I think that Jason can understand that we're not looking for a huge shakeup.
Right.
We need stability. We need somebody to guide the ship until we can have a permanent position. You understand the role?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't come up, I want to, if, if you think I came back to city Avon Park to want to fire employees, that's not, that's not my goal. My goal is to make this place awesome. My, my goal is to make this place where you want to be. My goal is to drive through some of the projects, some of the things that we got. That when I left, it really was hard for, for people to leave with unfinished business.
Sure.
And we had unfinished business and unfinished business wasn't getting people fired. I wasn't done with unfinished business.
I, I just, I just wanted to make one point about the, the, um, customer service issue with regard to that, um, uh, backflow event, I, I, I just, we say, I've been working with utilities for public and private for over fifty years. And, um, it's not uncommon for any utility, because they are a utility service company to provide additional service. Sometimes it's like, it's usually very minor if it's on the, on the customer side. But rather than making them hire a plumber to figure all these things out, if they're there, they say, oh, look, here's the problem. Now you need to hire a plumber to do that. But in the case of the backflow preventer, you don't ever want somebody to handle the backflow, your backflow preventers with, um, other than the, the city, or at least certainly not remove them. And, and, uh, because that's the, that's, that's the, uh, the city's right, not anybody else's.
The backflow preventers that are in question here, how much are those apiece? The backflow preventers that are in question here, how much are those apiece?
The backflow, I think that one was probably like $200 for the backflow, but we didn't give it. We took it back. So.
What about the check valves?
That was, they just, they're supposed to be straight lined.
And was the customer ever billed for the services that you performed?
The customer, no, because of the, the, what happened, what took place with the customer, it was almost like, almost like a swap. So basically it was just put a, the fitting on and put the pipe back. I mean, it was so minimal. It's like, if you say, hey, can you come out here? I'm not gonna charge you for, you know, something that is so fast.
And that's the point I was making. You don't wanna have them deal with your backflow vendor. That's something we should do. Uh, and um, even though, even if they owned that, it's still our responsibility whether it's on or off. We make that decision and, and then we take that action. But the, the service that I, I don't think that was inappropriate. And that, that's the only thing I'm speaking to there. Okay?
Well, Mr. Mr. Bernard, you say you don't think that was inappropriate, but after the investigation was done, it was found that it was.
Yeah, well, I don't know. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try and second guess anybody's decision. But I will say that I probably have a lot more experience with utilities than the, the, the personnel attorney. But I, I don't know what, what was there or what the facts were exactly. I'm just simply saying, working with the city, with the backflow vendor and making those changes, you know, okay. And I see Randy's struggling over there. If you wanna say something, Randy, go ahead.
You were given that report and you signed off on it. You said that was egregious, basically.
That wasn't the way I understood it.
Oh, that's the way it happened.
All right.
It's obvious, he, he's, he's not the right guy. It is obvious. I mean, it's just so much stuff going on.
I think we've heard your opinion. Uh, yes, sir. Yeah.
Richard Macklin, 1002 S Cornell Street. I got four water meters. And for years and years and years, I couldn't run a, a pressure washer to wash cars on my car lot, on my irrigation meter. It, my, my $299 Home Depot pressure washer would cavitate. I had to run it off of my city water that goes to my office. Okay? I, I don't wanna tell you how, I don't know how many years, but it was different city managers. And when they finally figured out that the pipe on Hall Street was galvanized and was rusted completely up. And I'd been paying all these bills all these years that I couldn't use and paying the astronomical city, which had the, the sewer and everything else attached to it on commercial property. They finally figured out it's our problem. It's our pipe. So what did they do? They went over to Cornell, put a new water tap in, put me a new meter in, and they, the city did all kinds of plumbing and pipework to get all my pipes hooked back up. So we're talking about, this is very minute. I mean, this is nothing. Nobody deserves to be investigated or served as heck, lose a job over making customer satisfaction of somebody with a problem. And I firsthand, and it's public record or whatever, you guys are gonna have all the work orders. And I put up for that with years and years and years. And so that at least they could do when they did it. And I still had all the water bills to go with it. I still never got there. But that, that, that pipe on Hall Street, you can look it up. And since then, that pipe on Hall Street is not used anymore. So they tell me they cut it off dead, deadheaded it the whole nine yards. And I had to go 300 foot to the other block for them to put another tap on. So now that meter that used to be on Hall Street is over on Cornell. So when he's talking about that, that's, that's, that's a joke. I mean, so I mean, you have to do certain things to keep people happy and I waited years to get mine done. So I mean, it's, I just thought it was pretty ridiculous that somebody would talk about something that minute or even have an investigation on it. When do you not call somebody and say, what in the world, you know, what happened?
Sure.
I didn't know you had to have an investigation.
I just wanna add, just ask some to Jerry. Jerry, if, if, if the city's called and they asked to locate their sewer lateral, plumbers feels there's two sewer laterals on the property and they request, this is the shopping center owner calling into the cit, the city, and then the city sending an email to me to please help that individual out. This is the shopping center owner. Okay? If they, if they say, can you please locate a sewer lateral, would it be my responsibility to go out and locate a sewer lateral?
Well, it depends on the circumstances. So um, you know, if, if you're just going out to go on their, for their, their own sewer laterals, their onsite sewer laterals, that, that might be an issue. Um, but if you're told by your, you know, told that you're supposed to go out there and do it, that's.
It comes into the city. There's an issue. They're out there. They can't locate the sewer lateral. They got a plumber that's looking. They got one, they feel there's another. I looked at a set of plans that are almost 70, 80 years old and I show another sewer lateral. I go out, start looking for a sewer lateral. When I go look for that sewer lateral, we can't find it.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds okay to me because you're basically helping them out with, you have better information than they do.
You're looking for a sewer lateral. So I'll end up and I'll just tell you what happened. Okay? So y'all know. So what ends, what ends up happening?
I know, listen, that's all.
As we go out there.
He is being.
We, we have a way, we have a way to locate things. So we take, we take, we go out, we, we pop open. Okay? We pop a grease.
I can't say that, I'll get in trouble.
So we look at it, we look at a grease trap. The grease trap, it goes out, say, as soon as you stick the, 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 the camera in there, you can locate where it goes. And you'll see where it comes out to the road because we wanna know where it is. Because ours is saying it goes over to the street and we couldn't pick it up. So when that we look, it starts curving back. We make the determination as soon as it curves back that there's an issue. When we were over there looking at it, we had the truck that was there, part of the ish, part of the thing and our responsibility as a, as a utility is the fog program. You're aware of the fog program?
Yes.
So we're, we're required to try to keep fats, oils and grease out of our stuff. When I popped that manhole, I looked in the manhole and I saw the hope that, I just saw the, the water coming right across the top. There was hardly any grease because it was all going across the top. There was, it wasn't acting as a, as a grease trap. So when I went ahead and looked at that, I said, let's, let's see this so we can get a picture and send it to the, to, to the prop, to the, the shopping center and tell them they need to fix it. So we went ahead and did that. We pumped, we pumped, which is all water. And when you get that, you dispose of water. There's nothing to treat water. So we just popped it, looked at it, took the picture, sent it, and they end up fixing it within, I think, 30 to 45 days of fixing their, their grease trap. So that was that. They called back on a Saturday, said they had another issue. I had staff look in the middle of the road, which was further down, just to make sure the manholes were flowing, and that was it. That's the extent of what I've ever done. And, and I got the, the email and said, thank you. Thank you very much for helping us out because we had no idea. We're, we're down here and, and Fort Lauderdale is the property rep and we have no idea what's going on. You helped us out. So that was another thing. We went over there. That was probably over like 30, 30 minutes to an hour and we had it done, like done, other than the, the looking with a GPR. But when I actually did what, what I, what I requested, it was fast and I was done. It was finished and we were on our way. So that was, and, and decisions like that, when you're a utility, when you're a director, you make decisions all the time of what's best as for the utility overall. You know, to go ask, hey, what do you think we should do and every, at the time, there wasn't, Danielle wasn't here. That was, that was our, you know, Chrissy. And to say, hey, what do you think I should? It's, we, we were working almost hand in hand trying to run the city, right? So we were doing what I think, but, and, and likely she would have said, do what you think is best. But I mean, we, we did it. We did it really quick. But for, for whatever reason, people took, took that opportunity to say, oh, look, 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 we, we haven't done this in the past. But it, it didn't matter where, who it was. Whenever we work, when I, I try to, I try to make the, the customer happy, not going on and, and, and fixing their stuff. And no, 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 that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm locating. I went there to locate a sewer line. That's all I did. I went there to locate a sewer line. In that process, I said, you got a fog violation. And that was it. That's all that happened. Nothing else. And I hope, I hope, I, I, I really, I hope you believe me. And I've never, and I've never.
I don't, I don't. And I'm gonna say this.
Okay.
You going all around the bush with your story and whatever. The, 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 the point I was trying to make is that per several of your employees, you asked them to work on the resident's personal property. And when they challenge you, you threaten their jobs. And after that, they knew what they had did was wrong. Now they was afraid that if they do anything, is that you could fire them. And they also felt as though I got to cover myself. And that's when they went, you told them not to do work orders. They went and did work orders. They did them and they submitted them. But you, you, you telling this big old drawn out story of what you thought happened. I'm only telling you what the several employees told me, that you wanted them to work on your property and your neighbor's property on the personal side to perform work. Then employees knew that they did not supposed to be on your property. And when they challenge you with it, you threaten their jobs and you told them that you would fire them. And so they went behind your back and they wrote up the work orders. Well, everything that they did. And when the new city manager came, they submitted it.
Yeah, didn't happen.
Okay, all right. I don't think we're getting anywhere.
Yep.
Further here. So we have a motion in a second on the floor.
What the motion is again?
Motion is to appoint uh, Jason Atkinson as the interim city manager.
Effective when?
Effective when is a good question. So your last day would effectively be the 21st. Is that right? Okay, so you could start when?
As um,
The 24th?
I mean, I, yeah, I guess start the 24th, but I just would need to know what my job duties are. I, I, you know, I, it's, that's, that's what I need to know. I'm not, I'm not coming here to, like I told you, I'm not coming here to fire employees. That's not what I, it's, I'm, I'm failing in my job if I'm firing employees.
Sure. So as we've explained, I mean, you would be the city manager 100%. Uh, there would not be anything different. The only thing is that the council obviously does not want some sort of a big shakeup. The purpose of the interim is to uh, bring stability and not make huge um, uh, position changes of what the city is currently doing until we hire a full-time city manager.
Okay.
So I'd like to make just one last comment that I believe that Denise said, as well as in our email, that we have four qualified candidates now and possibly could get a couple more. So there's always the option after the interim that, that we would have a chance to look at all those applicants and decide who would be the next city manager at that time. This is just interim right now.
Right.
And, and, and Mayor, I, I need to put it on the table so I have an understanding. This is just for interim. Y'all, do y'all have any inkling of making um, Jason the permanent city manager? I mean, have y'all?
Well, no, he's, he's put in as a permanent. I mean, he could very well be, but our thing's not ending until at least the end of November. It was, you were, you were of the opinion to make it go until, you know, January or February. So this certainly gives the option to extend it out. If we're in a circumstance to where the employees are having to fight every day just to be able to get by, then it creates a sense of urgency. If we have an interim where there's not that, then basically we can take our time as long as we want.
So my next question is um, when the complaints start, and they will, they will.
Okay.
What, what is this council is gonna do? I, I need to know.
I, I would, I want you to be fair about it because there's always two sides to every story. So I want you to consider it. And maybe, I don't know, if you wanna bring it to a council meeting, but you have to be fair about it. You can't take somebody's complaint and say that it's the truth without looking at both sides.
The point is that there's a, there's a natural structure within the city. Hold on, hold on. Let me finish this. Employees have the ability to complain, right? There's a whole complaints department. There's a human resources person there. There is a whole line of how they're supposed to handle complaints. That is how they should be done. The complaint should not just be to you. And then you acting upon that with no further investigation. No, employees are supposed to complain through the natural channels.
Watch this.
And if that breaks down, then certainly there's an opportunity for them to come to a council meeting, but not to you just privately and you acting upon that.
Dr. Kelly, did I do that?
You're doing it right now.
Dr. Kelly, did I do that?
Did you do what?
Did, um, when the complaints came to me, what did I do with the complaints, Dr. Kelly?
You came to me.
And you told me what? That they needed to come to you.
Yeah, they had to come to me directly.
Complain to me.
I can't just take, not that I doubt you, but I, I need to hear it for myself.
Right.
And that's what I did. I told them they need to go to Dr. Kelly. And not only that, I know that I can't give them any direction. I know that. So, so I don't want, nobody think that I took one side. I did hear what they had to say. Okay? And then I took the complaints to Dr. Kelly and I let Dr. Kelly handle the complaint. I stepped away from it. You, you could come to me.
That's great. I don't think, I don't think anybody's debating you. So.
I'm sorry.
Let's, let, nobody's debating you. Let's get on with it.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So you work where in Fort Pierce right now?
Yes.
So if you come over here and you are selected to be the interim, are you gonna leave that position in Fort Pierce? And, and I'm only asking because if you come over here and you spend three, I mean, let's just say two or three months over here and it turns out that you don't get the city position, the city manager. I'm just curious what your plans are. You're just curious. I'm just curious. You don't have to answer if you want to.
My, my thing is, is that I, I have confidence in myself, but it's the question that it comes across here. It's directly this. I mean, we're all supposed to have one-on-ones. If, if there's an issue, you bring it to my attention. If I were sitting in that seat, then we would figure it out and then hopefully we have the dialogue. Because honestly, prior to this, we never had a bad conversation. Out, out, outside of here, we never had it. I know there's things on the outside, but you and I, you and myself, we never had a bad conversation.
No, no.
Never, not one time. Right.
I'm not saying that.
I got you.
Asking if this would interim is something that you would be willing to leave a full-time job for, knowing that you may or may not get that.
I mean, I, I would, I would prefer, I would prefer that we go ahead and you go through the interview process and then that, and that is so, that is fast. And then there's a determination made and then there's safeguards some, but you still have the six-month thing, but yet, or the six-month probation. But honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be at odds with uh, Councilwoman Taylor. I, I wanna have that dialogue with you. You get in a, you get some, an issue, contact. Let's have the meeting, we'll have the conversation.
Me and you cannot be at odds if you treat the Avon Park city employees right and fair. That's the only way me and you are not gonna be at odds.
And I believe, and I believe that I have. And I, and I, and I, and I could probably tell you, I told you uh, earlier that I have not had people come to me and tell me, oh, I don't, I don't like, almost every single time that I leave a conversation or I'm talking to an employee, I ask them, is it fair? Is that fair? Are you good? Yeah, I'm good. And then, then I hear this and I don't want it to be like that. I don't wanna have that relationship. Like, I don't wanna have a three-two relationship. I don't wanna have that. I wanna have the respect of, of Councilwoman McCurran and, and, and the respect to Councilwoman Taylor. Right? And, and to answer your question about what would I do? I'd have to roll the dice on myself, but I, I honestly, I don't, I don't feel very good knowing that it's not beneficial for my career to come and keep having to explain myself and have someone try to go after me. When I'm not going after anybody. I'm not going after anybody up here. I haven't done that.
I like, I like.
I have to maintain my professionalism. I'm a public administrator. I have to do my best. And I think you all have. If you read, like you, you've read the, the, the letters of recommendation, that's across the board. That's different women, you know, gender, race, everything. It's different across the board.
And here's the thing with that, Jason, that I found to be odd. How long you came here and worked? For a little over a year?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
And you didn't get now one manager recommendation. Now, you worked with them for about over a little over a year. Not one manager, city manager, that you got a, a, yeah.
Mark Schrader.
Okay, he was our city manager and we fired him.
Danielle Kelly.
No, I looked at your file.
Danielle Kelly's in there.
I looked at your file.
And Mark Schrader's in there.
I, I looked at your file. I didn't see Danielle Kelly, but I did see Mark Schrader and we fired him.
I like, I like.
Both of them are in there.
Could please.
Okay.
Everybody's making comments about employees. And then uh, Dr. Kelly will confirm this. A little over a year ago, I, I met a man who needed a job that was related to somebody I knew for a very long time. At that time, there was, I believe, three positions open with the city of Avon Park. So I instructed this guy to go apply for it. And uh, I even told the city manager that I was sending him over. And uh, he came and he, I think there was four people that applied for it. He didn't get the job. But one of the persons that did dropped out, so he was next in line. So he got the job. And he just received his one-year recognition maybe a month ago. And he still works for the city today. And uh, I turned around and I asked him several times. I says, how are things going? He says, good. I said, what do you think about your fellow employees and the city manager and so on, so forth? And this is what this man told me. He says, I go out. And this is what this man told me. He says, I go out there and do my job. I have a family to support to, to take care of. And all I care about is doing my work. There are some employees that keep telling me to slow down. That we're not supposed to work that hard and that's not who I am. I have no problems and no issues with our public works director. So you want to talk about people you talk to? That's fine. You talk to people. That's great. But I talked to a young man who needed a job, who had four kids to support. And he needed a job right away. And I was so glad that at least I knew the job was available. And I was so happy that I found out that he got the job. And he's been here now for a year and got recognition recently. And so I even asked once or twice, I asked city manager if she heard anything good or bad about him. She said, no, it seems, everything seems to be okay. So. So you might hear some bad things and you're going, always going to hear bad things about supervisors, managers, city council members or whatever. But you're also going to find some people say some good things. So it's all a matter of opinions and where it comes from. So all I'm just saying is, you know, you can't always believe everybody who tells you everything. You can't always believe what you read in newspaper and you definitely can't always believe what you read on Facebook. So. Try to gather your own opinions. You did yours. That's great. I've done mine. I expressed it. Short and sweet. I'm done. I tried to make this as neutral as I could. Nobody wanted to go my direction. So here we are. I'm done.
Sure. All right. So we got a motion in a second on the floor. Please call, roll.
Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes. The question of when can you start? Can you start on the 24th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for the days of the 22nd and 23rd, uh, is that something for emergency purposes could be covered by yourself?
It, that's the weekend.
Right. No, I'm just saying that occasionally things do pop up on the weekends is the reason why I say that.
Who would our contact person be if there were an emergency on the 22nd or the 23rd?
I would recommend Randy.
Okay, got it. Everyone agreeable to that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And that is what we'll do.
Move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we've already had the Cabo discussion. Um, we have the water and wastewater. Is that something that we need to do tonight?
I would like to.
Okay.
The one that I've put on here.
Page four, 23. Two from the bottom.
Okay. A month ago, we had somebody do a study on our capacity fee. And, uh, we, we discussed it and the, uh, they were giving us the, uh, the current, uh, fee for their ERC. Uh, what option A would be, option way would be basically just bring us up to speed on what the everyday costs are as of now. And then there was option B, which basically would try to, uh, bring us back to where we should be and make the new people that are going to pay those fees, pay to catch us up where we fell behind, which I don't believe is fair. But without a doubt, the capacity fees, like everything else in the last 10 years, or whatever years you want to pick. The cost of labor, the cost of health costs and insurance, as well as materials and vehicles and everything else has more than doubled. We just went through a study brought by, uh, Jeff Smucker about the water capacities coming up and whether we're gonna have enough water. Their growth study in the city of Avon Shark, Avon Park shows that we're growing really fast. We've had multiple people talk about different building projects that were gonna come up and build hun, 800,000 homes, 1,500 homes, so on, so on, so forth. I think now's the time to go ahead and increase those capacity fees before we get started with these building projects. Because the fees, the cost have more than doubled. And anybody who wants to come and build here, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to pay what is fair, just like they're gonna have to pay their own employees more money when they did five or 10 years ago to do the job, as well as their health costs and their vehicle costs, insurance costs. Those are all gonna increase on them too. Well, the city needs to get paid exactly what's due them, which is fair. So with that motion, if I get this meeting over, I'll make a motion that we accept option A on the, uh, the study that was done a little over a month ago for the capacity fee.
Here we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, we agreed to keep it. We did raise it, did we not?
But you, you raised it, um, initially. You didn't raise it as high as what the stud, the original study allowed.
Right.
And then later on, you lowered even that to a lower amount. So you, I mean, you have the range up to what that study said it was gonna be unless your, your costs have decreased, which I doubt. Um, you would still have that study to rely upon and, um, you could probably have somebody update it fairly cheaply.
Sure.
But, um, I just point out the, the, the purpose of this is not to handle expenses. The purpose of this is to handle the cost of growth. People that are coming in from other areas should pay for the costs that they're, that the city incurs in order to accommodate their growth. The growth that they cause, in this case, having to do with water and wastewater facilities. And if you don't do that, then ultimately you're gonna have to pay for the same thing by bonds. And who pays the bonds? Your rate payers. So it's either your rate payers pay higher rates to pay for new capacity to replace the past capacity those new people came in for. Or you, you charge capacity fees, which actually should pay for those costs, or at least portion of the costs. It never pays 100%. But it, it certainly could help. Five years would be too long. Yeah. I would think you need to look at it two years, the way growth is coming up now.
Sure.
That, you know, it depends on the, 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 the growth aspect. So 2008 to 2010, nothing grew. You know, because that was just the way it was for the economy. But, you know, then later on, it was like you couldn't get enough capacity fees, um, in order to pay for the treatment plant that you'd have to build in order to have the, um.
Sure.
Uh, meet the demand of the new people coming in without having to cost the rate payers more money.
Okay. So the actual question is, is 2230 our current cost right now? Or is this just from the study?
Those are our current fees.
Okay. So after we got done with their, all the budgeting, that's, that's what it came up to.
The current, current costs of the.
Not our current cost, but this is our current fee.
This is what we charge.
Okay.
Our current fees per ERC.
Very good. Jason, did you have something? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Angelica Simpson. I have something to bring to your, bring to light. And it, it ties into what you're trying to do. Um, the citizens of Avon Park must be clear. Mayor, council members, city staff, I must address the motion being made regarding the capacity fee study. Because underlying flaw in the billing system directly affects the validity of any fees that you are attempting to make. The core injustice policy versus fee, the citizens of Avon Park must be clear. The council cannot proceed with setting future capacity fees when the underlying billing, underlying billing calculation is based on a fraud. The water department confirmed to me, my personal bill, that 14,000 gallons of water came in. 14,000 gallons of water goes out into sewer. That's not, that's inequitable.
Well, no, it's not necessarily because if you, if you're sprinkling the lawn, it doesn't go back out. But I just, go, go, go ahead.
It does not go into the sewer.
How do you know? Um, you're talking about, so if nobody, they don't sprinkle, you don't sprinkle with city water, then, then it goes back into the sewer?
It does not. It goes into the grass.
Goes into what?
Grass.
The soil. If, if you sprinkle with it, yes.
How about we start? Do, do you irrigate your lawn with the city water?
I use city water to irrigate my lawn.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I do, but it does not go into the sewer.
Right, right.
You charge me, you charge me for the whole thing.
Okay, so that is part of the issue. Yeah.
You, you understand the capacity fee does not affect existing people? Okay, well.
But you still need to have a base rate. The citizens of Avon Park must be clear. The council cannot proceed setting of future capacity fees when the underlying billing calculation is based on a fraud. The water department confirmed to me that 14,000 gallons of water came in. They billed for 14,000 gallons going out. So it, it does, if, this is just my bill. Okay? Now that could be, go below down the road.
That, that's how they bill you.
Yes. Okay. This is charging best on a get, not a full measurement. This 100% assumption means that we are charging a higher sewer fee on every drop of water used for irrigation and pool, pool. Water that never entered the sewer. Never. By its own policy, the city is charging the residents for services never rendered. The impact and demand of that, that flaw probably has caused my bill to triple. Originally we're getting $56 to $80, but I've been in Avon Park for three years. Now it's anywhere from 170 to $300. Now that's not only me. And I'm certain, I stand for other residents as well, that this needs to be thought about.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I'm not finished.
Well, your time is up unfortunately.
Okay, can I just finish one? Can I say one thing?
Make it real quick.
Okay. The problem is not that this is unfixable. The problem is the city's willingness to pass motions on future fees before addressing this inherent injustice. Tonight, I formally demand the council make two public commitments. Stop all action on the capacity fee study until the billing system is fixed. Formally schedule workshops or special meeting within the next 30 days to vote on implementing the transparent, transparent, equitable solution such as a sewer billing cap or an irrigation meter program. Cause I don't have one on my, on my thing. And I'm sure that other people would like that as well. And I also have a petition I'm currently working on. I have so far seven signatures. Thank you.
Okay. So as to it being a fraud, that's how every utility in probably the world charges because there's not a gravity sewer meter. You bill based on the water meter and that, that's just, that's how it's done. Some, under Public Service Commission, um, they, they cause utilities to limit it to 10,000 gallons because they figure that that's a reasonable number. So they limit it to the maximum of 10,000 for sewer based on water meter. Um, cities are not required to do that. Counties are not required to do that, but it has nothing to do with capacity fees. Nothing. Capacity fees actually make rates lower. That was the point that I was making earlier. And so if you don't want past capacity fees, what you're saying is I want to hire rates.
We, we can't have comments from the audience.
Yeah. So that's, that's basically, that's basically.
You can only speak in the microphone. You've had your time. Yes, sir.
Jay Saxon, 507 Tulane Circle. Um, we looked at this in the past. I really think, um, you know, well, you get your wastewater, you said, talk about capacity fee, impact fee. There's a Florida Impact Fee Act. I think, um, at the max you follow that. What's the, what's the proposed? Cause I don't have it in front of me or I'll see it on here. It's.
Option A is 4,720. Option B is 16,150.
And that's for water and sewer combined, right? Cause like 900 and 1,300 or 1,200, something like that. So. I think you, I think 50% is a good number. One of the things we were driving forward. Um, and, and that would be following a Florida Impact Fee Act, because that's kind of like the max you could do. We went ahead and did, uh, the impact fee, uh, you know, we did the study that was done by, uh, FRWA. There's, there's money. There's, you know, the way we set up the billing and everything else that was set for the, the structures was, um, to, to maintain the system, but also looked at having revenue forward as, as we went forward to fix and, and do water, waterline repairs. I think taking it to, uh, a, a very high number, um, may give issues in the future as far as, um, that Florida Impact Fee Act. I think that may give us issues, but I think that 50% mark, um, if you guys did that, that would work out good because of development agreements that we also work with and try to get that as far as developers doing, uh, you know, having costs for lift stations. We really push forward with that to have them offset the costs on the rate payers. And that's one of the things that we really looked at and we did that in the past. So hopefully we can continue to do it.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor for option A, which is $4,720. Is there any further questions or comments?
I just want to be careful because with raising them too high, you know, you also have, it will discourage development too. So. It's like, we gotta figure out what exact balance that is. You know, I realize costs have gone higher, so I'm not disputing that fact whatsoever. I'm just not sure of the exact perfect balance, you know?
Okay. Anything further? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes. Hmm, no. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. City manager updates? Good answer. All right. Our first sign up be Mr. Eric Longshore.
You got more than one?
We do.
Good evening. For those who do not know, I'm Eric Longshore. I act as your building official. Come before you this evening to address the brickle building. Since no one from this council, no one from the city administration, nor anyone representing you has spoken to me about the activity on building, on the brickle building project. I feel it's time to put on public record what has actually taken place during construction activity on this property. I will not answer any questions at the conclusion of my statement. I did authorize commencement of work on the brickle building before the permit was issued. As building official, I am authorized to do so per the Florida Building Code. Distipation in the code was in place long before anyone knew what DOGE was. It allows a building official to cut through some of the bureaucratic red tape of government bureaucracy. The question is, why would I do this? It has been speculated that this was a special privilege that it granted to the developer. This would be uninformed speculation. I granted this authorization for the business owner. I granted this authorization for the city and I granted this authorization for the community. The business owner was obviously anxious to open his business. The city was equally anxious to have additional business activity in the downtown area. And the citizens of the community had caught wind of it and were asking when the new gym would be open. To depict my authorization for work to commence as collusion with the developer is simply inaccurate, self-serving speculation, which is a personal affront to me. Listening to a previous council meeting, there is apparently an accusation that there were inconsistencies in the issuing of the certificate of occupancy for this project. There were no inconsistencies in issuing the certificate of occupancy for this project. The only question was whether a certificate of occupancy was needed or simply a certificate, certificate of completion. Research was done to determine if this was a new occupancy classification or was this a build out of an existing occupancy? This involved investigation into what occupancy classification this structure was constructed as. What occupancy classification was this structure last used under? And did this structure ever have the occupancy classification removed? Our research found that I had in fact condemned occupancy of this structure after the roof was remo, removed during the storm in 2017. Therefore, we issued a new certificate of occupancy, no inconsistency and properly executed. There was a conflict with the. There was a conflict with the scheduling of the final inspection. The business owner called my office to schedule the final inspection and was told that he could not do so as he was not authorized as a registered agent for the contractor. The biz, business owner then bypassed my office staff and called me directly, wanting me to perform the inspection for him. On behalf of the business owner, I called the developer, who was the registered agent for the contractor, and asked if I could schedule the inspection so we could get it done. The developer said the job was not ready for inspection as there were a few items that were not complete that he needed to address. Shortly after that phone call, I received a call from someone acting like an attorney, accusing me of collusion with the developer because I had called him regarding this inspection. I informed this gentleman that I had advocated for the business owner to try to schedule the inspection and I had no other reason to call the developer. This was my first indication that there was a conflict between the developer and this business owner. Whatever conflict that exists between the developer and this business owner has absolutely nothing to do with the building department and has had no bearing on the functions of the building department pertaining to the brickle building. Uninformed, inaccurate speculation, baseless accusation and slanderous innuendo have been promulgated by a group of individuals and their fictitious keyboard warriors that have their own personal agendas. For this council to listen to, much less act on this ridiculous rhetoric is an embarrassment to this city and to this community. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
All right, our next will be Kamla Long.
Kamla Long, 28 East Main Street. Been here for two and a half years and I've never had a meeting go this late. I'm like, holy cow. I just want to let you know that, um,
You're welcome.
Today, today is the 250th birthday of the Marine Corps. And, oh my God, I'm so sorry. I'm glad I didn't bring the big cake with the sword. Was not the appropriate situation, but I do want to thank you and I just want to- And she's spending it here with us, so thank you for your service.
Your anniversaries can only go up from here.
Bigger numbers. Anyway, I'm here today to request, it's an event request, for one of our new businesses, a grand opening and ribbon cutting celebration for the poorhouse in Maine and Barley's Hideaway, to be held on December 6th, and he says it's opening late tonight, I think. Right, all need a little adult beverage after this. Uh, so December 6th, and we would like to request a small road closure from East Pine to Lake and just have a little vendors and dance, music and line dancing and, uh, family little street party.
You want it from nine AM to nine PM?
Well, you know, that's the time we put in, but you know, that's really for setup and, uh, you know, setup would be at nine. So if we could have the road closure at nine, that would be fine. We're not really starting till like 10 or 11. Um, 11 will be the ribbon cutting and then we will probably finish between like seven, eight. Uh, the poorhouse closes at nine, so you know, we do want to have time for a tear down and removal of the cones and things like that.
Okay. Staff, you see any issues?
No, sir.
Issue I have with it is why wasn't it put in early so they can make the council's package? Because my thing is, I, I know you and I know you do what you do for the city. You do good things for the city.
Thank you.
But if we start allowing you to do this, we have to do this for everybody. And there's a procedure that events, um, request has to take.
Yeah.
So why didn't you get it in in time?
How about I make a motion that we approve this event right now? Is there a second?
Second.
A second, there's a second. All right, is there any quick questions? She asked the question, why didn't you get it in?
That you didn't get it in in time.
It was honestly just a matter of, um, we had a communication issue with, uh, our office and, uh, I didn't get it in on time. I was out of the country and, um, by the time I came back, I realized it hadn't been put in.
Okay.
Anything else?
You're from, um, Chief Marcy, did we get all this stuff, um, in there taken care of? Like he said, the, the, the road does, uh, have a plan, but it does not have law enforcement sign off. You got that right?
But I think Dr. Kelly will answer that.
We're still working through the fine details, but it's just such a small road closure. I don't think it's going to be an issue. It's not Main Street.
Okay.
It's a small-
So all of chief concerns has been addressed?
They will be, yes.
Before the event?
Okay. That's all we got.
Anything else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this is actually my last meeting as well with the council. I just want to thank each of you for being really supportive. As executive director for the past two and a half years, Avon Park is my heart. So thank you.
God bless you, Kamla.
Thank you, Kamla.
Thank you very much.
All right, last but not least, do you still want to speak? Yep, you had signed up.
Yeah, I was talking about ordering, I, and there was a question that we got stopped.
You were saying, the question before?
Might want to refresh your memory.
Water fee and all that. All I was trying to say is I don't, I want y'all to look at the, the hot issue and that, and that way, you know, before you do that, I don't, not saying don't do it at all, just take a look at the issue.
But there's-
And just do a study, that's all. Just see what's going on because that's unfair to me. I'm paying a hundred and seventy to three hundred where as other, other people are paying like it's even thirty to eighty.
Have you asked for a rate study at the city office?
I went and asked them to check on, well, I, I went there and they told me to come here.
Okay. So sometimes we do rate studies, going back and looking to see what's changed. Was there a break, anything like that? Has that been done at this point?
This is the first I'm hearing of.
Okay. Did we get that set up perhaps?
Just, but that, that's a double edged sword. I just warn you because nine times out of 10, rates need to go up rather than down. But, you know, um,
I'm not talking about a global rate study. What I'm saying is to make sure that she was billed the correct amount as well.
Oh, okay, for her specific-
Just because we had billing issues in the past.
I, 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 I worked that on this, this is my great grand mother-in-law's home. The city of Avon Park put in, uh, two or three. I won't point you didn't charge for it. I'm, I'm going to give the full form. Cut that.
Okay.
But then I notified you, my rates went through the roof. And I was thinking, oh, maybe a hundred, you know, maybe twenty dollars or something? No. It shouldn't be that. I should not be having to pay a hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. Whereas si, and, and, and I, I, and when I was, when I was, I've been, I've been a resident before and, you know, maybe it was a year back, but it was fifty to eighty. Okay, initially fifty to eighty.
Yeah, so the, the best thing that we can do, I mean, obviously everybody has to get charged the same rate, but the best thing that we can do is make sure that your meter is working correctly, make sure that you weren't billed incorrectly. It, it, it's happened before, not-
Well, they're saying-
Could be this time.
Fourteen thousand and I asked the city of Avon Park to do a leak, leak check. They said that there wasn't a-
They told me the same thing. Yeah. See, when I, I'm living in Avon, remodeling the house. I was that I'm remodeling, wanna be able more than where I was living and I was living alone. So if somebody seemed to come out and check the meters, they told me there was nothing wrong with the meter. I say go back and do it again.
They do too.
They did it again and they found it.
Cause I, I mean, and it's ridiculous. I am paying way too much for water. I'm probably, I want to maybe sit here, come on, so I'm on a, I'm on a limited budget.
We've asked them to check it out, that's what they'll do.
You'll be calling, asking them?
Um, do, do they have your information? If you can give them your information, they'll take care of it. No guarantees, but we'll make sure that it's at least billed correctly.
But I just want the one, and then maybe somebody else has the issue. I mean, that's not fair to anybody.
Well, I just have to point out the irony here that, um, you know, if somebody's going and checking for a leak at your house, that's on your side of the meter, that's something that's beyond the service line. Therefore you were asking him to do something on their, on their, on your property, which is a service. No, it can't be because if it goes through the meter, if, if it doesn't go through the meter, then, then, uh, it's not charged to you.
Nope, neither. And when you open up the meter, you can clearly see that there's a leak, but so that made me think you're lying. It never came out the first time, but you could catch it the second time.
Well, I talked, I saw the person come out, my, at my house.
Okay.
And I spoke to them. See, technically it's my mother-in-law, my grandmother-in-law's house still. So I'm like, what, I'm in a position of, I, I, I'm hands and tied. You know what I mean? I could fix stuff, I could probably pay a rent, I'll pay a plumber.
Yeah.
But then at the end of the day, you know?
Sure. All right. Sure. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Alex Dean, 3835 Arlington Street, Fort Myers. Uh, it's unfortunate that Mr. Longshore already left, um, because one of the things that I would say and to all of you guys here is now you're finally starting to see that everything that I predicted was going to happen so far is happening. Um, Mr. Longshore came here because there's people in this room that want him to face criminal charges. But Mr. Longshore understands what the rest of the county does and that there's people in this room that whether they resign or not, that's going to follow them and they're going to be the ones facing criminal, not civil investigation because of what they did and what they authorized for Mr. Longshore as an employee of the county to be investigated. He understands it. He knows where it's going. The people at the state understand it. Um, you can ignore it if you wish to and you can stand up and walk out on it if you want. That's frankly amazing and I think that tells you what this whole thing is about. But there are people in this room that are going to end up in jail and in prison over what they've done in this and it's not this good man sitting up here. And now I don't know if you're a real doctor, if you're just a PhD, but what I would say is you better make sure that you tell any future employer that you, uh, uh, if it's a public entity that you want to work with, exactly what you did here and when you left because I'm the guy, me, I'm the guy that followed Chief Derek Diggs, what he wanted, uh, the, from the city of Fort Myers and he wanted his dream job at the Columbus Police Department in Ohio. And I gave testimony on a Thursday when there were five. By Monday it was down to four. Now, was that my testimony? I sure hope so, but I'm the one that made sure that happened and I'm going to follow this because there are people in this room that are going to have to answer and pay for what they did to the good people and their good names. One of them who was up here and spoke tonight, a couple of them who are still up here.
Anything else for the good of the city?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I intend a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.